Can you turn me on? Thank you. Hey, everyone. We will start shortly. We have to have a physical quorum in the room of five. And here comes Mike Turner. Oh, good. And Mr. Kirschner. So we're going to have physical quorum in just a second, soon as they get themselves settled. Is Ms. LaTurner on the line as well? So they're both on the line? Ms. Bricksman is not. Thank you. Good evening, Supervisors. Good evening, Staff. Good evening, Loudon. I'd like to call to order the July 19, 2022 Loudon County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. This room has a hearing loop. If you need hearing assistance, please switch your hearing aid to the telecall mode. If you need a hearing headset, we have those as well. Please see the clerk to request one. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, dash 3708.2, and the Board of Rules of Order, Supervisors, okay, who's on the line, Jenny? Just Mr. LaTurner? Supervisor LaTurner requested to participate in this meeting by electronic communication. A physical quorum of the Board Supervisor is present in the boardroom, and Mr. LaTurner has made arrangements for, we have made arrangements for his voice to be heard in the boardroom. He made this request within the required timeframe, and the county attorney determined that Supervisor LaTurner meets the qualifications to participate remotely. The Board will record in its minutes that Supervisor LaTurner participated remotely from home due to medical reasons. Supervisor Bricksman also made that request. She is not on the line yet, but I will go on and say that she also made that request in the appropriate timeframe. And the Board will record in the minutes that Supervisor Bricksman participated remotely. She is out of the state on a work-related item, so hopefully she'll get on the call. I hope she remembers, because she's sitting in Mountain Time, so I hope she remembers that she's, the two-hour time difference, because she's actually, where she's at is Mountain Time. So she may be a little like with that, but I'm sure she'll get on. Having said that, Mr. Buffington, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I would. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. LaTurner, can you hear me? Mr. LaTurner, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Very good. Okay. I'd like to also announce that we have an addition of a closed session. This closed section item is pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-dash-3711A3 and 2.2-dash-3711A7 of the Court of Virginia to consult with legal counsel regarding the actual or probable litigation, litigation, and to consider acquisition of parcels of property for public use in the Catoctin Election District. We have a very long consent agenda. If there's anyone who wants to take something off of this agenda, just tell me now, so we don't have to read it and go back. So is anyone taking anything off? Okay, then I will read the consent agenda. The consent agenda is as follows. Item R1, Resolution for Greater Loudon Bay Ruth World Series, that's for approval only. Item R2, Resolution to Recognize Virginia Cooperative Extension, VCE, Loudon Master Gardener Demonstrations Garden 30th Annual Anniversary, and that is for approval only. Item R3, Resolution of Appreciation for Sarah Cole Etrow. She is retiring. She's the Acting Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development. That is for approval and presentation. Item 1A, Committee Confirmations. Item 2, Administrative Items Support of July 19, 2022. Item 3, Route 7 slash 601, Blue Ridge Mountain Road, Raven Rocks Road Intersection Improvements. Item R, item 4, Proposed Traffic Calming in the Cascades Community. Item 5, Proposed Traffic Calming Measures in the Loudon Crossing Community. Item 6, The Village of Waterford, Preserving the Landmark Infrastructure Improvements Master Plan Study. It's on consent. Item 9, Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments, Chapter 8, I'm sorry, 484 of the Codified Ordinance of Loudon County, On-Street Meters and Parking. Item 10, Authorization to Authorize Proposed Chapters 485 of the Codified Ordinance of Loudon Residential Management Parking. Item 11, Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to Chapter 482 of the Codified Ordinance of Loudon Parking Garages and Surface Lots. Item 12, Proposed Addition to the New Section to Chapter 6 of the Codified Ordinance of Loudon Conduct in Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Facilities and Vehicles. Item 14, Appropriations of State Revenue to Loudon County Public School for FY 2023. Item 15, Resolution Improving the Insurance by the Economic Development, I'm sorry, the issuance by the Economic Development Authority of Loudon County, Virginia of its Revenue Bonds for the Howard Hughes Medical Institute. Item 16, Board Member Initiative Proposed Speed Study at the Town of Brown Hill. That revised motion is at your dais. Item 17, Board Member Initiative Identify Funds to Conduct Traffic Analysis Study to Address Traffic and Safety Concerns on Easterbrook Circle and Cascades Parkway. Item 18A, Route 15 South Safety and Operational Study. Item 19, Contract Award Delaware West Boulevard from Arcola Boulevard to North Star Boulevard Cable-Duck Bank Relocation. Item 19B, Contract Award Prentice Drive Overhead Transmission Facility Relocation. Item 19C, Contract Renewal Architectural Service for Building Renovations. Item 19D, Contract Renewal Architectural Services. Item 19E, Contract Renewal Site Civil and Parks Design Services. Item 19F, Award of 30 During Summer Recession. Item 19G, Proposed Amendment to the Codified Ordinance of Loudon County, Chapter 840, Business, Professional, and Occupational License Tax. Item 19H, FY 2023 Residential Transit Occupancy Tax Fund Tourism Grants Recommendations. Item 19I, Establish Affordable Housing Land Development Application and Development Permit Waiver Fee Through the New Chapter of Codified Ordinance. Item 19J, Transfer of Funds for Land Acquisition Cost of the North Star Boulevard, Shreveport Drive to Route 50 Phase 1. Item 19K, Contract Renewal Personnel Computer Workstations, Servers, and Services. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
I thought that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, whoa, 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 whoa. Did I, what, did I say what?
Item 7.
If item 7 is on my list, I said item 7.
Response to...
I did not say item 7. I don't have it on my consent agenda list. Should it be on the consent agenda?
It should be on your...
It's not on mine.
I move to add it.
No, 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 no. It hasn't been passed yet. So we will, I will, the motion was made by Supervisor Umstead, who I'm giving the motion to. I'm giving the motion, the second, to Supervisor Kirschner. What we're going to do is do a friendly to that, to those two motions, to add item number 7, which Ms. Glass will read.
Madam Chair, I move to add response to item number 7, Response to Board Member Initiative Feasibility Study of County Glass Recycling in Ashburn.
Okay. And Ms. Umstead, Mr. Kirschner, you accept that motion? Okay, very good. Discussion on the consent agenda. Mr. Kirschner.
Just a couple of statements. First of all, I want to thank my board members up here for supporting the Village of Waterford Preservation and Landmark Infrastructure Improvements Master Plan Study. This is obviously a very large project that we will be looking at, both in terms of undertaking it. I want to thank the Chair and other distinguished colleagues up here who have had a significant role in working with the village. And I see a lot of members of the village who are here, and I appreciate your support and efforts in doing this, especially Ms. McGinnis. And she's kind of one of those bulldogs that just doesn't stop, which is great. This is what we need. And we have a lot of those in the Catoctin District, which we love. This is such an important project, because this is really one of the jewels of Loudon County that we have. And we, the Catoctin District has gone, you know, we've had kind of one-off projects here and there, but this is really more of a comprehensive approach, which will really allow us potentially to get federal funds for many of the various improvements that are needed here in Waterford, including water, infrastructure, various engineering studies, and land surveys that need to be done. So I'm really looking forward to seeing where we can get this. And I know Ms. Umstead is going to be looking at this first and foremost on the Finance Committee, and I appreciate everyone who is supporting us. So thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you for the support of this.
Thank you. Ms. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank the constituents of Broad Run who have brought up this, this issue regarding purple bins. We've, it's, I could almost say, almost every meeting that I go to, there was someone that would mention or ask if we have, if we could have a purple bin in our area to recycle. I was reading the information that we have where it says, "Many Ashburn residents put the glass in with the rest of the recycling, which, or they throw them away, which we're not supposed to do, because once that glass is in there and it crunches up, they have to throw all that, all the recyclables away." So us having a bin, I think it's really important. So thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a budget adjustment in the administrative items, and I'm very, very pleased to see it, that we have long-awaited improvements along Waxpool Road in the Ashburn District. The budget adjustment moves $300,000 from the Waxpool Road Sidewalk Project to the Waxpool Road Faulkner Park May-Demott Drive Project in the Capital Projects Fund. It will be used for interim improvements at Waxpool Road and Ashburn Road and Ryan Corner Place intersection, and the Waxpool Road, Shellhorn Road intersection. Long overdue. I'm very, very happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I would add my voice to a couple of things up here. First of all, I think Kate McGinnis Wyatt, if you want someone to advocate for, for the thing that you know is right and that you believe in, you cannot get a stronger advocate than Kate McGinnis Wyatt. We wouldn't have Journey Through Hall of Ground were it not for Kate McGinnis Wyatt. She caught me in the grocery store aisle one time. You know, I was just, I was, I was just trying to get some chips. And she started talking to me about this, and that was like two years ago or something. And by the end, I'm like, Kate, whatever you want, just. But the Village of Waterford, all the villages, but the Village of Waterford is one of, if not one of the oldest historic villages that are still intact in the United States. It is, it is really a gem in Loudon County, and it's important that we keep it. We have, if you, if you go out there, and I've gone out there a couple of times, there are issues with water, issues with flooding, issues on the one side of the street that has enough water, the other side of the street doesn't have enough. Besides the issues with the traffic that we've been discussing recently. So there are, there are significant things that we need to work through, and we are working through in the Village of Waterford, and that will help a lot. So thank you, Mr. Kirschner, and everyone who worked on this item, Ms. Umstead as well. Ms. Glass, I agree very much that we need glass recycling in Loudon County. I do not think, I actually, recycling is so important to me. I will gather my, my glass and then take it somewhere like every couple of weeks. So to have somewhere closer to take it is also very, very important. Actually, one more thing I didn't call, Mr. LaTurner, do you have anything you want to say on the consent agenda, sir?
I did, other than to tell you that Supervisor Bricksman is now on with me out in the ether here as well.
All right. Wonderful. Supervisor Bricksman, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you open to comments on the consent agenda? Is that what you're doing?
I was going to ask him, did you hear the whole, did you hear the whole consent agenda? Can you, do you want to make a comment?
I think I have an understanding of what's on the consent agenda. Thank you very much. I just wanted to confirm, if I might, with staff, that if we leave the Broad Run Ashburn Purple Can Recycling item on consent, that we still have an opportunity with that item to look at other areas in the county for purple glass recycling. There's not one in my district. So I'd love to get a confirmation on that.
Mr. Hemstree?
Thank you, Chair Randall. Yes, if you notice, the second part of that motion also sends this issue into the capital needs assessment process, which means that we will also be looking at the expansion of glass-only recycling throughout the county.
Phenomenal. That's great. And then, Madam Chair, my only other comment would be that, yes, on the Waterford, I went out to visit, and I'm really glad that we're doing that. And I had a chance to tour around with Kate McGinnis Wyatt, and really appreciated that. And then I had two items, I believe, stayed on consent, and I just want to say I appreciate my colleague's support on those two items. No funding is moving or money's moving around on either of those right now. One of them's a traffic calming study, and one of them's a signalized intersection study, where staff is going to go look for some funding to be able to do that at Estherbrook and Cascades Parkway. And I know that many residents trying to get to Potomac Elementary School will be very appreciative if we get a signal there. So I think that is all I have. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and excuse the lighting.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion will pass 8:01. Mr. Sains is on his way in. Supervisors, this is the week that we have speakers who are at the 5 o'clock time, as well as the 6 o'clock time. We, what we're going to do is, we do have a lot of staff in the room for Ms. Etrow's resolution. So we'll do the 5 o'clock speakers, and then we'll do the resolution, and then we'll come back and do the 6 o'clock speakers, depending on the time. But let's do the 5 o'clock speakers first. I will call your name. When I call your name, please come to the podium closest to you, unless you're on the phone. You have two and a half minutes to speak. You have two and a half minutes to speak. When you're finished speaking, I ask that you yield the floor to the next speaker. Our first speaker is Chris Tandy, followed by Joanne McAlpine, followed by Terrence Cook. Good evening, Mr. Tandy.
President of Loudon Climate Project. We're a nonprofit group working to educate folks about climate change solutions. Excuse me. It's been a little while. Some of our members and coalition partners are putting in comments tonight about a resolution we'd like you to consider adopting, the resilience and sustainability resolution for all to thrive in Loudon County. This resolution is one of our two main initiatives, the other being air monitoring. It was started by our co-founder and inaugural president Natalie Pien, and has been joined by quite a few other nonprofits and individuals in Loudon. I believe we're up to 20 organizations and 250 individuals now, and those are in-person signatures, not online, thanks to Natalie's work and some amazing volunteers that we have. The latest PCC report shows that greenhouse gas emissions continue to rise, and current plans to address climate change aren't ambitious enough to limit warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius. In Loudon, we're home to the sixth-largest greenhouse gas emission source in Virginia, the Panda Stonewall Power Plant, which emitted 1.8 million metric tons CO2-equivalent greenhouse gas. And that's 2020 data most recent available from the EPA. Loudon's 100-plus data centers use over five times the energy in Loudon that residences do, and it seems like every time you turn around, someone's clearing land for another one. I'm aware that these have largely been by right lately, but the fact remains that Loudon is responsible for a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. We know that some of you see this issue as a priority and are working on it. Loudon is doing environmentalism bigger than ever before, and it's encouraging. We're still a very large emitter, though, so you can see why it's important to do everything we can with the opportunities available at the county level, and why our group shows up today. We hope to work together towards progress, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tandy. Joanne McAlpine, followed by Terrence Cook, followed by Reverend Jean Wright. Good evening.
Good evening.
Bye-bye Waterford. Hold on just one second, because Waterford, the entire village has given us jazz hands and are leaving the room and bye-bye. Thank you. Just give us one second so they can, just please.
Okay, ma'am, we're ready when you are, and you're followed by Terrence Cook.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Joanne McAlpine from Ashburn District. I'd like to thank the Board for the one-use plastic bag tax. I'm seeing people foregoing a bag, using paper, or bringing their reusable bags, and I hope we can reduce microplastics in our water and soil. So thank you. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters Loudon County, whose 47 members are throughout Loudon. Our Board voted to support the resilience and sustainability resolution for all to thrive in Loudon County. The League's mission has, for a long time, included environmental protections in Loudon through our policies in land use, solid waste management, and water and sewer. With the growth of our county comes new challenges and responsibilities. The resolution faces these challenges and finds solutions through energy and natural resource initiatives, so it continues to be a pleasant place to live here. As a personal experience, my family installed the solar panels and bought a plug-in electric car. We have not been greatly affected by the gas, higher gas prices. And we've, because our, but if it wasn't for the local government's involvement, Virginia government's involvement, our home association would have stopped us. The land of the free did not foresee home associations. We are also part of the Virginia Energy Credit Program, which sells our solar production and should pay off our panels in three years. This program became so because of our local Virginia government. My point is, our government, particularly the local government, has the greatest impact on our everyday life, creating a safe and healthy environment. And it's time that Loudon makes that commitment. The League appreciates that you created the Environmental Commission to help with healthy living in Loudon, and we urge you to adopt and implement the resilience and sustainability resolutions recommendations that will be presented to you on July 29th Environmental Summit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Terrence Cook, followed by Reverend Dr. Jean Wright, followed by Madeleine Skinner. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. Chair Randall and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Terrence Cook. I live at 602 West Washington Street in the town of Middleburg. Being a resident of Middleburg, I'm obviously also a citizen of Loudon County. As it happens, I am the chairperson of the Town of Middleburg's Planning Commission. As such, I, along with my fellow commission members, have taken a keen interest in the county's proposed comprehensive amendments to its zoning ordinance. However, my remarks today are mine alone, and I do not speak for the, for Middleburg's Planning Commission as a whole, although it is my sense that my commission colleagues would share in the essence of these remarks. The principal reason I am unable to present remarks adopted by our planning commission as a whole... as a whole is that, in frustration, we abandoned efforts to confidently identify and evaluate where the zoning rewrite was substantially changing the existing ordinance. Where exactly, I ask myself, are the needles in this haystack? In the rewrite available online for the public's review, there is no comparative evaluation of the new ordinance versus the existing one. How is the average member of the public to discern what, where, and why revisions are being made? Tracking them down is an exercise in futility, not to mention the inordinate amount of time one must devote to, to the unrewarding effort. Surely, there is a better way to present the proposed rewrite to allow for better comprehension by the public. Other concerns are relevant. The zoning ordinance committee established to represent their constitution with shareholders and provide meaningful input to the county's planning commission were not allowed the opportunity, opportunity to review several sections of the ordinance rewrite before they were required on July 6th to vote and stop their review. Indeed, it is my understanding that there are still some sections of the rewrite that have not, and likely will not be released for public review and input within the time allotted. Comments on the proposed rewrite are required to be offered via an online tool that many have criticized as awkward and confusing. Many simply give up trying to navigate it. Further, a comment by county staff at the July 6th meeting of the zoning ordinance committee, which was related to me by an attendee at that meeting, was to the effect that while the public might not see the entire rewrite before the expiration of a 90-day comment period.
Sir, your time is up.
May I quickly close?
You may not. However, we will be happy to take those comments via email.
I have, I have given the clerk a letter addressed to the board with all my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Dr. Jean Wright, Reverend Dr. Jean Wright, followed by Madeleine Skinner, followed by Christina Farver. Can we once, go in twice? All right, Ms. Skinner, followed by Christina Farver, followed by Jordan Suratian. Good evening, Ms. Skinner.
Good evening, Chair Randall and Supervisors. My name is Madeleine Skinner. As you know, I'm with the Loudoun Historic Village Alliance and the Philamont Village Foundation. As I wrapped up my final comments in ENCODE+ yesterday, I realized it had been three years since we finalized the 2019 comp plan, and the work on the zoning ordinance rewrite began, and we're still in progress. It's been pretty busy for many people working on this, staff and residents, as well as many of our organizations. Then I thought about Lincoln, Luckets, Peonian Springs, Philamont, Aldi, Bluemont, Taylorstown, Unison, Waterford, Willisville, Ashburn, Arcola, Howardsville. These are mostly our rural historic villages per the comp plan. Some are considered the legacy villages, and some of these need to still be added to the rural historic villages. Every single one of these villages that I named has had to deal with more and more issues for the last up to five, 10, 15 years, and some will continue to be here when we return in September. Speaking of the proposed, I, I'm here tonight to speak for the proposed Philamont Firehouse. We'll be back, still asking for the same thing, a seat at the table to discuss and work on the answer of renovating place and save our historic horse show grounds and village. Remember, the greenest building is the one that is already built. Destroying our historic horse show grounds and only park area in Philamont must be removed as an option. In the meantime, we're also working with a consultant, the Philamont Village Foundation, on our National Register of Historic Districts. We were approved on June 16th to move forward, which we're really excited about. But what's been even more fun is all the information that's being uncovered. Jane Covington and I have been out interviewing so many people, and the information we're finding is just absolutely amazing, and we can't wait to share that. So one thing is that Philamont really has not changed in this core village since the early 1800s. Yes, there were some houses added in the mid 60s, but for the most part, we remain unchanged. So today, I'm just asking, help save our villages, all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Christina Farver seems to be on the Webex, and Jordan Suratian.
My name is Christina Farver. I have lived in countryside Algonkin District 10 since 1996. I love my neighborhood. We have miles of trails with creeks and mature trees. I can walk to the Potomac River. I can ride my bike to the library. I share my garden with hummingbirds, and albino squirrels, and turtles, and skunks, and deer, and bees, and foxes. I am the CFO of a small Virginia-based business, and my passion is climate activism, because my son and your children deserve a livable future. Today, I represent the Chesapeake Climate Action Network, nicknamed CCAN. CCAN is a local grassroots organization dedicated to fighting for bold and just solutions to the climate crisis. 674 members live in Loudoun. CCAN signed the resilience and sustainability resolution because we envision an economy where energy efficiency and truly clean sources of power sustain every aspect of our lives, where dirty fossil fuels are phased out, where all communities enjoy a healthy environment, where sustainable jobs are the basis of the economy, and where we limit global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius. The reality is that we are on an unsustainable path that is destroying planet Earth. Fossil fuels are heating the planet, acidifying the ocean, destroying habitat and entire species, creating air and water pollution, and causing extreme weather events. This is not a dystopian picture of the future. This is happening right now. We, all of us, have a moral obligation to protect the people we love, the places we live, and the plants, and the animals, and the ocean that make life possible and enjoyable. The good news is that science has told us exactly what we need to do, eliminate fossil fuels. The good news is that we have the solution, and our resolution lists many of them, native plants, solar energy, protecting biodiversity, electric vehicle infrastructure, a circular economy, and regenerative (inaudible).
Ms. Farver? Thank you. Ms. Farver? Ms. Farver, thank you so much. Thank you so much. And if you have, if you like, if you like to send us anything, you can certainly email the board as well. Thank you. Jordan Suratian, and our last speaker for the five o'clock hour, is Sandra Vigil. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Suratian. I am the Northern Virginia Organizer for the Virginia League of Conservation Voters. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the resilience and sustainability resolution. In 2000, Virginia LCV was founded by local activists and conservationists here in Loudoun County in greater northern Virginia, out of the need to safeguard this region's natural resources in the face of rapid development and environmental degradation. It is in this spirit that I speak before you tonight, in strong support of the resilience and sustainability resolution for all to thrive in Loudoun County. We signed on to this resolution because actions here to cut carbon emissions, expand clean energy, and chart a more sustainable path forward will have a huge impact, both locally and in, and in ensuring we meet our state's overall pollution and reduction, pollution reduction, and clean energy goals. Loudoun remains one of the fastest-growing and most energy-intensive counties in Virginia, and by adopting the host of climate sustainability recommendations in this resolution, Loudoun can ensure a sustainable trajectory and one that helps ensure clean air and water for all who call Loudoun home. Loudoun County is well-positioned to be an influential leader on environmental protection, and we urge this board to recognize the large impacts that the decisions you make here will have on clean air and climate change, and adopt sustainability policy recommendations accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker for this moment, for this time, is Sarah. Is it, did you pronounce your last name?
Sandra.
Sandra. Is it Vigil or Vigil?
Vigil.
Vigil. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I work for Loudoun County Transit. I work for Keolis. I'm here to tell you a little bit about myself and my team. I've been working for the county for over 20 years, in the school system, and now in the transit department for seven years. I'm here to tell you a little bit about 125 people that work there. We're struggling still. We are trying to negotiate with the company a living wage. We're trying to negotiate better benefits, health insurance, 401. Today was one of our negotiating days. It was to cry about. The company decided that we're not worth their time. Instead of trying to negotiate with us, they keep taking away from us. They brought up the fact that they gave us a dollar increase when they first came to work in this county, April last year, the first of April last year. With a dollar increase, they also took away the benefits that we had, which is 60 people in my job right now have diabetes. Most of the insurance that we have does not cover the majority of the medicines that we need. That's a really big takeaway. Also, the 401 that they offer, which they have yet to match up within that year, they've been having glitches and glitches where they have not matched anything up. It's non-existent. People are putting in the money, but there's no matchups as of now. And then, they also took away our hours. On the previous contract, we had a 38-hour guarantee. Now, as of today, they said we have no, no hours guaranteed. So some of us are making 32 hours, some of us are making 36 hours, some of us are making 30 hours. We can't live off of that. We can't keep going like this. We stayed, and this is what we try to explain to the company today, we stayed, not because of the money that they were offering, which is what they said, that that's why we stayed, because of the money that they were offering. That's not why we stayed. We stayed because we were being loyal to the county, and now we need your help to get these people to work with us. You know, and they're not trying to. What they're saying is, if you didn't like it, you should have left. We didn't want to leave. 20 years working for this county was not enough.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that was our last speaker for this, for this time slot. We will have another speaking time slot at six o'clock. Before we, Mr. Sains and Mr. Hempstreet joins me in the front to do the resolution for Ms. Cole Etrow, I would like to welcome to the boardroom students through the, from the National History Academy. They have been at the Journey Through Hall of Ground. It's a four-week academy from July 3rd to July, I believe, because we hit it to the 29th. They're staying at Foxcroft in Leesburg. It's a residential program for rising 10th and 10th through 12th graders. I had the great pleasure of meeting many of them and talking to and with many of them over this past weekend, and having, having one of the best interactions and some of the best questions. They are from all over the country and from five states, and I don't think, I think about half of them are here today, but welcome to the boardroom, everyone. All right, Mr. Hempstreet and Mr. Sains, will you join me down front, please? Ms. Cole Etrow, will you come forth with anyone that you'd like to bring with you?
(inaudible) after many years of service, and she was going to have a goodbye event, I asked her if I, if she doesn't have the goodbye event, does that mean she won't leave? It didn't.[1477.51][1477.51](laughter) But we're going to do a resolution for you, and then I will have you speak, and Mr. Hempstreet, if you'd like to say something as well. All right. Resolution of appreciation for Sarah Cole Etrow, retiring acting director of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Whereas Sarah Cole Etrow began her service to Loudoun County on September 18th, 1989, as a partner, as a planner too, with the County Department of Planning and Zoning and Community Development, and will retire from her position as acting director of the Department of Housing and Community Development on July 31st, 2022, having served in several leadership roles during her tenure. Whereas Ms. Cole Etrow has a versatile career that has provided the county with strategic experience in both planning for the Department of an Enduring Community, designing for the programming necessary for successful implementation, in addition to assisting a variety of advisory boards, commissions, and local elected officials to establish innovative plans and programs. In just a second, I'll ask you, how many boards have you worked with? Nine. 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 Whereas Ms. Cole Etrow, in conjunction with the interdepartmental, interdepartmental staff, drafted the Affordable Dwelling Unit Ordinance and served as the Planning Department representative to the Affordable Dwelling Unit Advisory Board for 15 years. Whereas Ms. Cole Etrow served as a project manager, manager for the toll road plan that established the station's locations, transit nodes, and high-density transit-oriented development policies for the toll road corridor. And that was actually before the toll road was built, correct? Yeah. And whereas Ms. Cole Etrow served as a project manager for the ZUM, the Zern Initiative, was that for Mr. Zer?
Yes.
Initiative that correlated long-range and long-use planning with capital improvements. And whereas Ms. Cole Etrow served as a project manager for the 2001 revised general plan and the 2001 county-wide transportation plan as a policy overhaul that resulted in seminal environmental and rural economy policies and established land-use policy areas suburban, transition, rural towns, and JMLAs. And whereas Ms. Cole Etrow obtained $2 million in HUD Neighborhood Stabilization Program funding and $1 million in county match funding from the Housing Trust to address Loudoun's neighborhood's hardest hit by the 2008 foreclosure crisis. And Mary, I know it. And whereas Ms. Cole Etrow drafted the Affordable Multi-Family Loan Program Guidelines and revisions to the Housing Trust Fund to enable for its loan, for its large loans and affordable housing developers, and managed the first, a few, first few loans through the legislative process. And whereas Ms. Cole Etrow managed the development of the Unmet Housing Needs Strategic Plan, which established an implementation framework and specific housing goals for addressing the housing needs of households with incomes from 0% to 100% of AMI. And whereas Ms. Cole Etrow provided the necessary leadership to establish the Office of Housing and the Department of Housing and Community Development. Now, therefore be it resolved that on July 19th, 2022, the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors and staff extends our sincere appreciation to Sarah Cole Etrow for her 32 years of service and her professional dedication, dedication for enduring in Loudoun County and contributing to our county. Thank you so much, Sarah.[1716.13][1716.13](applause)
I'm going to have Mr. Hempstreet speak, and then I'll give it to you, okay?
Just really quickly, Sarah, thank you for all of your work and all of your service. I will tell you that Charles Yudd told me recently that you taught him, he learned from you, I don't know if Charles is in here or not, but you, he learned from you how to run the gentle plan process from your 2001 experience. And then you also taught him how to go through the zoning ordinance rewrite process in 2003 when, so he's now handling those. So thank you for training Charles to handle those processes. Thank you also for being such a leader in the organization, particularly as an advocate for housing and moving the agency from a division within Family Services to an office within the County Administrator's Office, and then now to a standalone department. I think that the work that you have done, both with the I think that the work that you have done, both with the Unmet Housing Needs Strategic Plan, as well as the development of the structure that can support the continuum of needs within housing within the county, is a testament to your work, your hard work, your dedication, and your leadership. So thank you so much for everything that you've done.
So Sarah, on behalf of the board, first of all, let me say, you have taught us all so much. I said that just to, you have taught us all so much. And, you know, talking about housing is hard, and talking about affordable housing is hard because there's such a stigma on that word. But what I've noticed about you more than anything else is that for the people who don't hit a certain AMI, for the single dad, for the new person in the county who just can't afford to live, for the college graduate, for the retiring senior, not only do you work with them, but you make sure that they retain their dignity as they're looking for a place to call home and a place to live. And we know how hard it is to find that in Loudoun County. And if it wasn't for you, we would not have been able to welcome so many new Loudoun friends and neighbors. We're going to miss you terribly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Randall. I appreciate it. I don't have a lot of words. I know you all have a long meeting today, but I am very, very honored by this proclamation. So thank you all so much for this. This means a lot to me. I'm very happy to have my family joining me this evening. I appreciate their love and support and tolerance for all the night meetings and the Saturdays and the Sundays spent at work. Their support has been essential to my long career here with Loudoun County. So I want to introduce them. So I have my husband of 29 years, Frank, with us. My daughter Lucy, who's a physical therapist in Percival. And my daughter Nancy, a graduate student at UVA in urban and environmental planning. And Loudoun County Public Schools, Wood Grove High School, Loudoun County all the way. My family life has been in arrobing with my career at Loudoun, as you can tell. I sometimes refer to Lucy as my toll road plan baby. She was born during that project. And Nancy as my Dallas South Plan Amendment baby. But when I started working in Loudoun in 1989, there were 86,000 people living in the county. There were still cows grazing at University Center, and Route 28 was a two-lane road. There was no toll road. The Brambleton rezoning had just been approved by the Board of Supervisors. I've had the good fortune to have a front row seat and participate in the metamorphosis of the county over the past 30 years. And for a planner, it has offered an incredible opportunity to work with amazing people on amazing projects. I've worked with nine Board of Supervisors, incredible staff colleagues from across the county government, most especially planning, family services, and my beloved housing team, and there are many housing members out there tonight, which I appreciate. Thank you. I've enjoyed working with the people of Loudoun County, who have shared many different perspectives on a variety of issues over the years, and also our exceptional nonprofits, business, and developer partners. It's not always been easy. It's been a lot of hard work, but it has been very fulfilling and purpose-driven. So I've had a wonderful career here at Loudoun and have appreciated the opportunity to serve. So thank you all very much.
Luke Lynn, can we do this? Can we take a picture? And then Mr. Sains and I and Mr. Hempstreet step away, and then the planning staff come down, take a picture with Ms. Etrow as well? Can we do that? Is that okay with you? Okay, so let's do one picture, and then you all get ready to come down to another picture. Okay, let's turn the front row from this way. Ready? Three, two, one. So is the staff in the room to do the ledge item? Y'all in the room?
They're in the Dallas room.
We're going to go grab them?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do the ledge item real quick? Well, not real quick, but we can do the ledge item? No, actually, yeah, thank you for that. I don't have a voice for a cause this evening, but I'll go back to that. Yeah, we're going to do that, we'll do that. So if you have a, if you want to report on a regional body, put your light on, please. Mr. Laterno, you have regional body reports?
Sure that we're looking forward to Randy Clark joining us next week as our new CEO at Metro. He'll be starting next week, so, but otherwise, nothing new to report.
Wonderful. Ms. Brixman, do you have any regional body reports?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think there were any meetings I went to in the past two weeks, just looking forward to attending NACO and carrying a resolution in the Health Steering Committee this week.
Wonderful. Does anyone else? All right, I will report this, and supervisors, I will hand all of you this information right now. The Northern Virginia Transportation Authority has completed our six-year planning program. There were four applications that Loudoun County applied for funding to receive from MBTA, and we received funding for all four of our programs. Jazz hands, jazz hands. Those programs were the Loudoun County Parkway Interchange at Route 50, Mr. Laterno; the Ryan Road whitening Phase Two for Evergreen Mills Road to Beaver Down Road, Mr. Buffington; the Route 7 Corridor ITS Implementation Study, and the Route 7 Corridor, Route 9 to Dallas Greenway. So we got, we're all over the county here that we got these, and so we are very, very, very grateful. We received a total, we will be receiving a total of $73,750,000 from MBTA on our road projects. And I will say, it does behoove you to have the chair of the county, we also be the chair of MBTA. So I'm going to pass these out so all of you all can see the projects, who got what, who didn't get what, and all the whys. So I do, I'm not going to do a voice for a cause today because they couldn't make it, but I will ask Mr. Hempstreet if he has any things he'd like to share.
Thank you, Chair Randall. I have four comments for this evening. The first is that I am pleased to report the success of the Let's Go promotional campaign created by Loudoun's Transit and Commuter Services Division to inform members of the public about the county's commuting options. Building on the Rediscover Transit campaign, the bilingual Let's Go, or Vamonos?
Vamonos.
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 Campaign featured advertisements on a number of platforms, including social media, Google, and radio. This resulted in more than 11 million impressions on social media and 73,000 visits to the Loudoun County website. The campaign was funded through a grant from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation. You can find the Let's Go brochure and video in English and Spanish at loudoun.gov/commute. Second, Virginia Cooperative Extension, or VCE Loudoun, is planning its next water testing event, which will be held in October. Loudoun homeowners whose water comes from a well, cistern, or spring can sign up now at loudoun.gov/watertesting to be notified when registration opens for the event. Participants will receive a water sample kit with instructions. Their returned samples will be analyzed by Virginia Tech's Research Lab for more than a dozen water quality parameters. Homeowners will receive their confidential results, an explanation of what they mean, and information about addressing any problems about six weeks after the sample drop-off. There is a cost for the sample kit of $65, which is significantly less than the $300 typically charged by private labs. Third, Loudoun is represented by two important state policy boards, with Governor Youngkin's recent appointment of Sheriff Mike Chapman to the Virginia Criminal Justice Services Board, and the reappointment of Chief Keith Johnson to the Fire Services Board. Chief Johnson also serves as the chair of the Fire Services Board. And then finally, area teenagers and adults are invited to enter the Novel Expressions Art and Film Contest, sponsored by Loudoun County Public Library, the Department of Parks Recreation Community Services, and the Loudoun Youth Advisory Council. Participants may choose any book from their summer reading list and create a piece of art or a short film inspired by the story. The deadline to enter is August 22nd. Details are online at library.loudoun.gov. Those are my comments this evening, Chair Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Hempstreet. Would the staff please come to the table to do the ledge item? Come on, come on. Good evening. So here we go, huh? We are ready when you are.
Good evening, Madam Chair. It's our pleasure to have with us tonight the team from Troutman Pepper Strategies, who's been a great help to us throughout the prior session. And with me to my right is Mr. Clark Lewis, to my immediate left, Ms. Jennifer Wally, and then Ms. Karen Addison. So really, I can't tell you how happy we are to not have them in the virtual format, but to have them here in person to be able to talk to you. As we completed the General Assembly Session and the Special Session this year, we provided a summary. We refer to this as our wrap-up, and you can see that the components of the staff report hit on the initiatives. There were some successes realized with the board's initiatives with respect to the bill regarding funding for nonprofit organizations and some of the details that we were dealing with in the construct of those organizations and our ability to work with them. And then also, we had a really valiant effort by Senator Favola on the commission complaint issue. It really didn't succeed in the end, but we worked it, and we expect that that will likely come back in the upcoming session, or at least will tee it up for the next year. Also, in the report, we hit on the legislative items of note that we had discussed throughout the session, and an update on the budget. So with that, I would just say we're here to speak to the board, and we hope you take advantage of the opportunity to talk to the team today about the experiences we shared during the session. Again, we're very pleased and grateful for the help that they provide.
This was, actually, I believe technically they're still in recess. Won't they, they haven't signed a die yet. They're going to reconvene and do the judges, and then they'll sign a die. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You can turn the light.
Thank you, yes, ma'am. They are coming back in September, early September, for the Special Session, and they will incorporate those bills that remain open in the Special Session, do the judges, as you mentioned, and then that should be concluded hopefully for the year.
Okay, all right, thank you. But wasn't time, that was a clarifier girl. Questions for staff? Mr. Laterno, I'll go to you first, and then Ms. Brixman, I'll come to you after.
It's not exactly a question specifically about the session, but I'm kind of asking everybody I encounter who's smart on this topic. Do you have any thoughts or predictions about what's likely to happen regarding redistricting with the suit on House races, on the House of Delegates specifically?
I think the consensus would be that, given where we are right now, that we are in July, the upcoming race would have to be done in November, that it would be very difficult for the folks running elections to really get it done in a timely matter in anticipation of November. The judge has yet to rule on the lawsuit, but I think if I were him or her weighing the equities and there's no great urgency, I would think that it's probably going to be put off an additional year for the House of Delegates Senate. But that's just my personal opinion.
Well, that seems to be the consensus.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laterno. Ms. Brixman?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Wonderful. Anybody else on the day that has had questions? Mr. Kirschner?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for all the hard work that you've done at all levels and to help our county, especially get some of the funding that we always so desperately need. Just a couple of comments. I know that I was reviewing some of the state budget, including some of the things that were in this item, just specifically in terms of education. I noticed that one of the things that was there was that, I think the budget funds $22 million for SROs. Do you know how ultimately that will be divvied up? Any sense of what we will get in terms of the school resource officers? And if you don't, that's fine. I can ask that offline at some other point.
I'm sorry, I don't know, I do not know specifically how they're going to allocate those funds.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll follow up on that. There were a lot of other really great education funding. I would encourage my board members to take a look at that. I also noticed that the Dallas Greenway legislation, which kind of new, kind of got tabled until next year. Do we have any sense of where we are headed with that? Any updates or words in terms of whether we will ultimately see that package finished?
I'll take a, as of today, this morning, I think the session went long, as we discussed with the budget. I believe they are in the formative stages, really, of getting that work group going. So I really don't have any additional news other than that. I don't, I do anticipate this issue will be back in January, or I think Delegate Reed felt very strongly about it. It's just whether or not the Secretary of Transportation and his team and the other stakeholders, to include the county, you know, where we are in the next several months. But I think that pay should be picking up pretty quickly now that the session is wrapping up, or has wrapped up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. It's on staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the data center legislation related to real property tax, the way the report is written leads me to ask one question. It says that, let's see, data center fixtures that are taxed as part of the real property, where they are located, do we think they would be taxed in any other way? I mean, or are we certain now that fixtures will be treated as not quite as real property? Because real property generally doesn't depreciate, but I guess they are going to be taxed as depreciating assets?
I read the summary over this morning, and my recollection is, and I think the county provided us staff language that they felt would address the concern of Loudoun County, and that language was incorporated into this bill, to my recollection. So I can give you more details later, but I do remember or recall that staff here did review it. There was some concerns, and they gave us suggested language that they felt the bill would be workable for the county.
And I know, and I know staff was confident in how you all worked on that. It just, there seems to be, the way this is written up, it looks like there's a loophole. And so if you could let us know... And so if you could let us know whether there actually is, or if it's just the way this report is written, that would be great, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And one generic question about metro funding. Do you, what do you, how do you assess the climate now among the General Assembly members and the governor vis-à-vis whether we face any more risks of the state taking money from Chair Randall's NVTA to use to cover any, any metro funding? Where are we now, climate-wise, in the General Assembly? I, I know they said they wouldn't do it again, but what do you think, based on what you're seeing?
Thank you for that question.
Oh, yeah.
I, I will answer very generically first, and, you know, this year was very different, as y'all know, that we, we had a General Assembly that really had high revenues with taxes, and also the federal leaf money. So this year was different, and as opposed to other years in the past, where the discussion was not how we're going to reduce some parts of state government to help fund others, it really was how we're going to expend the excess money that was available to the Commonwealth. So that was, I think, a first for many of us here. That's not typically how it goes, you know, the General Assembly often plans for budget shortfalls, and then, you know, how to accommodate it. With that said, you know, obviously, there's concerns what the next several years may be, because there will not be the federal leaf monies coming in, we can't count on this windfall happening forever. And I think that fortunately, I do believe that the memory, many folks in the General Assembly, House, and Democratic, do understand the importance of the metro and Northern Virginia transportation, and I think there is a lot of interest in making sure that that money gets supported. There was going to be relief to 64 this year, I think y'all may recall, like $600 million was allocated for Interstate 64. That's going to take some of the burden, getting that road going, on what, as to other parts of the state. So to answer your question, I think that if you talk to the leadership, particularly in the transportation, the governor's office, and the General Assembly, they understand the importance of funding in Northern Virginia.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it unusual to have a special session go into September?
You know, it's, it's, it's a great question. It's been, unfortunately, the trend over the last several years. I think that, I, I do believe one thing that the Democrat and Republican leaders in our General Assembly agree on is they don't like the trend, they don't necessarily favor a trend, because they are citizen members, like y'all, that are working in Richmond. I think the budget just didn't get done this year, and I'll look to my colleagues, but when that happened, there is a, and we all fight it, there's a tendency to say, you know, there's some tough bills that are remaining, and if we're going to come back for the budget, why don't we come back for this legislation that we haven't quite wrapped up? So, but I, we are all hopeful, we are all hopeful, that we get back to, we complete in 45 days, we complete in 60 days, and get the business done.
Yeah, I, I know the governor campaigned on getting the budget out on time, and that was a major campaign item for him, so I was kind of surprised to see that they went as long as they did. What's up with the stadium? My impression was Leader Sasso tabled it after some controversy, one of the recent ones. Will it come back next year? Isn't, what's, where are we on that process?
Yes, I, I, it will not be back up in, for special session, I think we're all confident of that. I do believe that it will be back under consideration for, in the January session. I think the governor's office has publicly stated it, as, as well as other leadership in the General Assembly, so I think we will see that in January.
Do you have any sense of where we are with the labor legislation that was passed in prior years? Is it, is it secure? Is it up for discussion in the next session?
Well, you know, we, we, as y'all know, there is a, there were several bills this year to sort of look at that legislation. You have a House majority that is Republican, control 52 to 48, and I think you have a Democratic majority that's 21-19. I think as long as we have that balance, it will be difficult, not to say impossible, but difficult, again, look to my colleagues, to overcome the legislation that was passed in years past.
What would it take to overpass, just out of curiosity? Simple majority in both houses?
We can't guarantee how people will vote, but just, so we have a Lieutenant Governor, Governor Sears, who is a Republican, so one vote change next year, not, not this year, but the following year in the Senate, in your 2020, she potentially could, if the House stayed Republican, could break the tie on that type of vote.
Okay.
So it's very narrow, both sides.
The, is there, I just want to put a marker out here. Can we try really hard to all get on the same page about the Dulles Greenway in the upcoming sessions, so we don't have any surprises midway through the process? That has kind of become the norm over the last couple of years. And the last thing is, have you heard any talk at all in Richmond about PFAS, polyfluorals alkyl substances? They're called-
Mr. Turner, your time is up, sir. Can you, you want to wrap this question up, or you guys want to answer the question?
Yeah, I, I think you mentioned that before, and some work, I, I will check on that, I, I, not in the last year.
Big item at NACO, just-
Okay, we'll, we'll follow it. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was interested in SB 316, Juvenile Records Identification of Children Receiving Coordinated Services. Says the bill provides that such formal agreements may allow local agencies and the Department of Juvenile Justice to immediately identify children who may be receiving, who may have received service, treatment services, or care from local agencies. What is the, what's the purpose of identifying children receiving services?
Karen, or Jennifer, are you familiar with it?
Ms. Glass, what page are you on?
Um, actually, I'm on, actually, I'm on, actually, the actual bill.
Yeah, I know, but-
Uh, buh, 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 buh.
Is, was it in a package?
Yeah, it's in the package. I had to go back to the-
Free-
Was it under, it wouldn't be under Health and Human Resources, it would be under Juvenile Justice?
It was under, yes, it was under Hordes, Community Corrections, Juvenile Corrections.
Stop her time, please.
I, if it's okay, we'll be glad to research that for you and provide additional information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I have a couple of things. One, you can let the General Assembly know this, and not our members, just the General Assembly. There's no such thing as a surplus till they pay their bills. They don't have a surplus. They actually are underpaying their employees, and we have to pick up the differential, so I don't want to hear about a surplus, till the General Assembly pays their employees livable wage. Then they can talk about having a surplus. That's the first thing. Secondly, I am completely confused, let's go to page 13, the discharge planning item, I'm really confused about the jail discharge planning item. Are we giving this $3,700,000 per jail? And it says it's, it's to, for support of individuals with serious mental illness, and to include emergency client assistance resources. There's a whole lot of words there, none of that means anything, none of that means anything. I read all the words like five times, I understand what the words are, but the words together do not mean anything. And so if somebody could explain to me, that to me, like I'm a fourth grader, I'd really appreciate that. If we go to page 12, the Health and Human Resources funding as well, the $2 million from the general fund for the alternative custody of individuals support to a temporary disorder, to a TDO, again, words that help me, help me understand what that is, because those are, those are great words, they just don't mean a whole lot. And then let's go back to page 6, the Marcus Alert Bill. The Marcus Alert Bill, and like, I, I don't know, I'm not sure how much I can say this particular thing. The problem with a very well-intended Marcus Alert Bill is this. The Marcus Alert Bill is a locality-by-locality-by-locality bill. So if someone's having a mental health crisis, and they stay in their locality, and their names are part of the system in their locality, and law enforcement comes up on them, then that law enforcement in their locality will absolutely know that that person's having a mental health crisis and what to do. However, people with mental health crises don't remain in their locality. They don't get to the county line and go, oh, I can't go over this county line with my mental health crisis. So until we do, the Marcus Alert Bill, Commonwealth-wide, it doesn't really matter. In fact, Marcus Davis Peters, who the Marcus Alert Bill was named after, when he was having his mental health crisis and ended up dead, was not in his county. And so we have got to actually figure out how to get this well-intentions bill really right, because if we do it right, we will save lives. But if, but in Northern Virginia, Alexandria and Arlington are one step away, Prince William and Loudoun are one step away, it's intentions, well-intentioned, but it doesn't make any sense in how it's, how it will be practiced. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Well, there's a lot in there, but I, I think just in general, we will, I will look up and, try to assess how the discharge planning will work, to your question. And, you know, regarding the Marcus Alert, I think that's an ongoing conversation that the General Assembly will be having, and I think there will continue to be tweaks to that, and to, to make it stronger.
I'll be happy to come down and talk to them.
Well, I think the more we can provide specific recommendations, I think that would be, that would be very helpful. So I'll be happy to, to, you know, work with you on that moving forward. I think there is a desire to-
Get it right.
To improve it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's been a long session, been a lot of work. Thank you very much, really do appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go back to public comments, everybody. We have, for the six o'clock session, we have 10 people signed up for public comments. When I call your name, if you come to the podium closest to you, state your name, you have two and a half minutes, unless you are on the WebEx, you also have two and a half minutes, but you won't come to a podium. Our first person is Natalie Pien, followed by Jonathan Kaufman, followed by Jenna Ruddy.
Hello, my name is Natalie Pien from the Catawba County District. I am very grateful you created the Environmental Commission, I look forward to the environmental audit, and I urge you to adopt and quickly implement the recommendations. Tonight, I represent the Loudoun Climate Project, that's best concern of Loudoun's environment and Loudoun's impact on climate change. In the 36 years I've lived in Loudoun County, I've observed changes that are not all positive. For example, 30 years ago, I could see the milky way from my rural home. I frequently saw and heard quail on my property. Today, no more. I've observed roads and more new roads congested with cars. I read the Greenpeace report about the negative climate impact from Loudoun's data centers. With urgency, Loudoun Climate Project initiated the Resilience and Sustainability Resolution for All to Thrive in Loudoun County, because Loudoun is not as, more as sustainable as it could and should be. The final resolution is a collaboration with the Piedmont Environmental Council, the Loudoun Wildlife Conservancy, and the Native Plant Society Piedmont Chapter. So far, 20 nonprofit organizations with over 1,000 Loudoun members have tied on to support the resolution. Several nonprofit representatives spoke earlier, and more may speak now. The resolution lists nine reasons why it is needed, and gives specific suggestions on how to do better. Loudoun Climate Project's greatest concern is the Metropolitan Marshing Council of Government's determination that greenhouse gas emissions from Loudoun County, unlike neighboring jurisdictions, increased by 56% from 2005 to 2018. The report states the increases from the commercial sector, most palpably from the over 100 and growing data centers. It is undeniable that we are in a human-caused global climate crisis. Last August, upon the release of the OTCC report, UN Secretary-General Antonio Gutierrez declared code-red for humanity, stressed irrefutable evidence of human influence. The heat wave moving Europe now is yet another good example of climate change. Clearly, fossil fuels must be kept underground, but some land use practices in Loudoun County create demand for them. For every energy hog data center approved, greenhouse gas emissions increase from power plants. For every overpass on Route 7 or Route 50 to create new flowing highways, greenhouse gas emissions increase from more and more gas-powered cars. We are polluting the world's common resource, the air. What happens in Loudoun does not stand out. Loudoun's part in this tragedy of the comments must be addressed. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Pien, please email your comments in as well. Jonathan Kaufman, followed by Jenna Ruddy, followed by on the WebEx, Julie Kimmel. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Kaufman, I reside in the Leesburg District. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm very grateful that the board created the Environmental Commission to advise and make recommendations on policies and practices regarding Loudoun's environment, sustainability, and the management of energy. Tonight, I represent Friends of Banshee Reef's Nature Preserve, which has 64 Loudoun members, and whose mission is to enhance and support Banshee Reef's nature to preserve as the region's premier preserve. The Friends of Banshee Reef's board voted to support the Resilience and Sustainability Resolution for All to Thrive in Loudoun County. We support this resolution because increasing greenhouse gas emissions in our region will negatively affect the habitats at Banshee Reef's, and in turn, the ability of Loudoun's current and future population to experience and appreciate nature. For this and other reasons, I urge you to adopt and quickly implement Environmental Commission recommendations that will be presented to you at the July 29th Environmental Summit. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a minute, that's not July 29th, it's, it's July 27th, July 27th. That's okay. Jenna Ruddy, followed by Julie Kimmel. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Janae Ruddy, and I'm an advocacy and conservation intern with Audubon Naturalist Society. We serve the greater Washington DC region, and in Northern Virginia, operate our programs out of Rust Sanctuary here in Leesburg. At ANS, our conservation priorities include human health and access to nature, biodiversity and habitats, fighting the climate crisis, and sustainable land use. I ask you this evening to pay close attention to each of these as the county expands economically. 20 organizations, including ANS, signed the Resilience and Sustainability Resolution for All to Thrive in Loudoun County, and I am here today to ask you to consider this resolution, particularly in advance of your July 27th meeting with the Environmental Commission. Loudoun County, just like many locales, faces the challenges of sustainable growth. Decisions made today, including citing of data centers, sustainable energy use, and transportation challenges, will have impacts for decades to come. Such ventures include environmental sustainability concerns as listed in our resolution. As the county continues to grow, the board has a responsibility to address equity issues and climate impacts. As you consider the future, we ask you first and foremost to have equity at the center of decision-making. We encourage the board to consider who benefits and who is burdened by past and current developmental actions, and how can burdens be mitigated and benefits be more broadly shared. Imagine if Loudoun became a county with more concrete slab and pavement than greenery, a landscape dominated by windowless, energy-hungry data centers with the natural beauty of Loudoun stripped away. These are not trade-offs that we need to make, and smart planning now can ensure economic growth comes along with a more thriving, sustainable county. How can Loudoun County be a great example to the nation and its surrounding locales, and spearheading environmental sustainability alongside economic growth? Ultimately, to whom much is given, much is expected. Therefore, I ask and urge the board this evening to consider and act on these recommendations in the resolution. Loudoun County can be the standard, and we encourage you all to achieve that. We have submitted written comments in support of this resolution, and we encourage you to please review them in addition to our testimony. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing Loudoun County grow both environmentally and economically for the benefit of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Julie Kimmel, followed by Mark Nguyen, followed by David Painter. And Ms. Kimmel is on the WebEx.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Julie Kimmel, and I'm the manager of member cultivation for Mom's Clean Air Force. We are community of 1.3 million caregivers across the US, committed to protecting our children from air and climate pollution. Tonight, I'm representing Mom's more than 100 members in Loudoun County. Mom's Clean Air Force supports the Resilience and Sustainability Resolution for All to Thrive in Loudoun County. My mom was a teacher in Loudoun County for 25 years, from 1989 to 2014. She helped open and establish two new elementary schools during her career. She taught kids from hundreds of families that had recently moved into the area. She witnessed a ton of growth, growth over those 25 years. Tons of new construction, tons of new traffic, farmland, wetlands, streams, and wooded areas lost to new construction, like those two schools she helped open in the surrounding neighborhoods. If mindful and well-managed, this kind of growth can be a good thing. Loudoun is a wonderful community for families, a great place for kids to grow up. But if Loudoun continues to lose its natural areas and green spaces at rapid pace, it will stop being a place that families flock to. Between 2013 and 2019, as Loudoun continued to lose green space and build out data centers that guzzle fossil fuel energy and fuel climate pollution, the annual number of extreme heat events in the county more than doubled. Extreme heat is a scary proposition for families. Children are more vulnerable than adults to heat-related illness. Children are also more vulnerable than adults to many of the effects of the climate crisis. Rising temperatures and decreased air quality can increase asthma attacks, allergy- Rising temperatures and decreased air quality can increase asthma attacks, allergies, and the incidence of petiforen diseases like Lyme. They can also create food insecurity and contribute to mental health problems and developmental delays. But most importantly, the climate crisis is threatening our children's future, their survival on this planet. The resilience and sustainability resolution for all to thrive is a way to acknowledge climate impacts on our children and in our community. It provides a roadmap for managing future growth so that Loudon doesn't languish with thrive. On behalf of MOM's Clean Air Force's members in Loudon County, I urge you to adopt this resolution and to adopt and quickly implement the Environmental Commission recommendations that will be presented at the upcoming Environmental Summit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Nguyen, followed by David Painter, followed by Raul Castro.
That's what you call getting in under the wire. Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to speak this evening, I know I don't have the crew of speakers behind me like I did previously, but it doesn't mean that it's any less important or less disruptive to the community that's going to be served by the school improvements, for say. Red Hill Road is a very rural road. If the county, state, or school want to improve it and make it safe, okay. But I know all of you run on road safety. Now, is that real? Or is that lip service? Because to have 60 buses coming in on a gravel road, twice a day, minimum, that's just for the middle school, not counting the high school, the elementary school, the ballfields, and there'll be no walkway on the plans that the school board has right now for, for foot traffic, bicycle traffic, anything. I wonder how those kids are going to feel about getting in their parents' car on the other side of Evergreen. No walkway, no crossway. I hope, I know that the school board says that they have the final word. I know that you all have said that it's hard to influence them when they're building something out. Well, I know that you hold the purse strings. I know that you have the clout, and I know you have the relationship. Please have them make Red Hill Road the emergency access, excuse me, the emergency, yeah, emergency lane, not the primary access. There's two other lanes that could be used on Evergreen Mills. They already have the plans, and they're actually going to be submitted six months later. But you know as well as I do, once that entrance is there, Tony, you know it's not going to be changed. So, election's coming up. Trust me, guys, this will be an issue. As many people as I've talked to about it, we'll put our money behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. David Painter, followed by Raul Castro, followed by Alex Rowe.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for letting me talk to you all tonight. My name is David Painter. I've been a transit driver for 13 years. I'm kind of following Sandra. We're just here asking for fairness. We need, you know, after 13 years of service, I've been through all three of the contractors, VRT to MV, and this right here is the worst. We need y'all's help with the financing, because they're not going to give it to us. All we're asking for is a livable wage. We want a wage compatible with all the rest of the regions, which we're not getting, you know? And we want to be treated fairly. I mean, I came in, was making $20 an hour, and I've seen signage everywhere saying new hiree's $24. No experience, nothing. Which means I got to train them, and they're going to make $4 an hour more than me? That's wrong on so many levels to be treated that way. When you work for a company, you want to go above and beyond. You want to do the best you can. And with this company, it's very hard to do that. The insurance is terrible. I have a chronic arthritis, it doesn't cover most of my medicines, I've had to get through a new treatment plan. And now that I've moved to Sterling, I live in a diverse neighborhood, and my neighbors tell me, we need this transit service for the extra income coming in. The business is needed. And, you know, we provide a good stewardship for Loudon County, and I love Loudon County. I've lived in Fairfax my whole life, and now I want to live here, but I need a livable income to do that. And without y'all's help, I can't do that. This company, they don't, the silver line's coming, and they're not going to have the drivers to cover the routes. They need like 60 drivers. They don't even have enough to cover what's going down, and they're leaving like flies, they're going to these other companies, Fairfax Connector, Arrested Limousine, and you name it. And, Mr. Randall, I know you know our situation, and we really need you all to help us, because they're saying, they underbid the contract so much, they're trying to make the profit off the drivers' backs. And that's not fair to us, you know? Because of their business dealings, we're having to come to you for help, so that we can have a livable wage, and I can keep doing the job. And I've had a Class A license since 1986. Most of these guys I work with weren't even born then, you know? And I want to, I've developed lifelong friends, passengers and coworkers. And I love my job, I don't want to go someplace else. But I'm going to be forced to if something doesn't change. So, thanks for letting me talk to you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Castro, Raul Castro, followed by Alex Rowe, who is on the, on the phone, on the WebEx. Good evening, Mr. Castro, it's good to see you.
Good evening. Good to see you too. My name is Raul Castro, I'm with the Eastern Atlantic States Foreland Council of Carpenter's. Our mission is very simple. We want to bring more people into the middle class by offering good-paying jobs, retirement plans, healthcare, and a skilled workforce to the industry by providing free training. As some people in this room already, may already know, this is a very challenging task to accomplish in the construction industry under the current market conditions. The exploitation of workers, of mainly immigrant workers in construction is real. Wage theft is real. The underground economy is real. The wage theft, wage theft report that was put together by the Carpenter's Union in the data center wall is just a very small sample of the reality that construction workers live on in daily basis. Many may argue that the information presented in the wage theft report may be old, but that is just showing you the history of the current situation. We find ourselves in a position where if we don't investigate and spend our resources, wage theft and the underground economy won't get fixed. We strongly believe that by adopting labor standards across the data center, the data centers, we can prevent the exploitation of the most vulnerable workers in our community while bringing more folks into the middle class so they can afford to live here. I know there has been some action taken by some of the data center owners to fix some of these issues, but we're not there yet. As always, I'm more than happy to talk to any of the data center owners to come up with creative solutions to fix these issues. Thank you for your support and the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Alex Rowe, followed by Bill Saras, followed by Sarah Richardson.
Hello, my name is Alex Rowe. I reside in Fairfax County, but represent many members throughout Loudon County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am very pleased that the Board created the Environmental Commission to advise and make recommendations on policies, practices regarding Loudon's environment, sustainability, and management of energy. Tonight, I represent the Air Club, Great Falls Group, as the political chair, transportation chair, and as an executive committee member, which has roughly 600 Loudon members. The executive board of the Great Falls has voted to support the resilience and sustainability resolution for all to thrive in Loudon County. Our mission is to make Northern Virginia a national leader in sustainability, blockability, and transitioning the region to fossil fuels. We support the resolution because Loudon in particular is a world's internet capital, and with such a large data center industry in our backyard, of which I work within, we have a unique opportunity to address energy and land use and make, and take ambitious steps to make this industry powered by renewable energy. As a result, I urge you to not allow major corporations, such as Amazon, with its massive presence in the area, to dictate environmental, energy, and land use issues within the county, and to empower yourselves to not only make environmental resilience a top priority for county bus fleets, building, et cetera, but also empowering yourselves on the same issues when it comes to major corporations and their desire to become a major presence in our communities. Finally, I urge you to adopt and quickly implement the Environmental Commission recommendations that will be presented to you at the July 27th Environmental Summit. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Bill Saras, followed by, Bill Sellers, followed by Sarah Richardson, followed by our last speaker, Muka Benjamin.
Thank you, Chair Randall, and members of the Board of Supervisors. We are thrilled this evening to have some members of our National History Academy program with you tonight. This summer, we have 66 students from 27 states, five countries, and one territory. Just counting, looking at the rows here, we've got 20 students from 15 states and the country of Israel here tonight. But I really wanted to introduce National History Academy to you all. We started the program five years to inspire young people to learn about the foundations of democracy and what it means to be an American in the modern age, and have built wonderful partnerships. The college, we're a nonprofit partner of the College Board and recruit students with them. The National Endowment for the Humanities has supported us. We work very closely with the Smithsonian, National Park Service, and we're creating something very special, and that is something that we're, we're hoping to scale up over the next few years. We've been online the last two years, and we had over 1,000 students from all 50 states and 20 countries. But we, you know, at a time where we're struggling with civic and historical literacy, to, to reach out to young people, give them, give them a way to empower themselves in how they understand our country, to talk about difficult issues with these students from all around the country, to see the conversations that they have, where so often they're either in echo chambers where everyone thinks the same way, or they have a minority opinion and might not be willing to, to state their minds about things, to bring them together, to encourage civil discourse, to, to learn about both the triumphs of American history, the tragedies of American history, the hypocrisies of American history is, is inspiring. And these young people give me optimism. Chair Randall was with us, I invited her for 45 minutes on Sunday, I think you said two and a half hours, and may come back in a, in a few weeks. I would invite all of you to, to join us. Supervisor Buffington, we're in your district at the, at the Foxcroft School. We've got something very unique and special going on. It's, you know, with all the, I think I interacted with all of you on Route 15, it's, it's exciting to be here to talk about National History Academy and some of our opportunities with that. So, you know, thank you all, I hope you can join us as well out at, out at Foxcroft, July 28 or 29. So we'll get an invitation. So thank you.
Yeah, I will be out, I will be back out July 28th, and what we can do, Supervisor, anyone that wants to go, we can just put on the four-year calendar, so we can all, so we, more than one of us can come at one time, if we, or more than two of us, we put in the four-year calendar. So put in the four-year calendar for, for July 28th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I just quickly say that I'll be out of town for the whole week, next week? So I apologize for missing those two dates.
Okay, great. Yep, thank you. Sarah Richardson, and then our last speaker is Muka Benjamin. Good evening.
Good evening. I would just take, like to take a few seconds to follow up on some comments regarding the resilience and sustainability resolution. I spent some time collecting signatures for the petition, and I'd like to share with you some of the experiences I had. And the most common comment was, "Thank you for doing this." Some others were, a man from Ashburn, he said that adjacent properties to the data centers are one degree hotter. I think that's an interesting thing to pursue. That was his comment. A young woman, she was possibly in the seventh or eighth grade, said she was concerned about climate change, and hastened to add her name. A local high school teacher told me that students work on assignments to model a waste-free community. I hope we don't have to wait for the children to make this happen. Finally, one young woman commented, "You mean you're asking the Board to do what they already should be doing?" I urge you to act on these resolutions, recommendations in the resolution. Act locally, think globally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Muka Benjamin. Good evening, young man.
Good evening. How are we doing today?
Very good.
Wonderful. My name is Muka Benjamin, I'm a Hindu. I am here simply to bring the idea forward about a Western Loudon recreational center. A little history, five years ago, I went into Percival Board, Board meeting, wearing a similar attire, just motivated. I'm sorry about my attire, I wasn't really ready, but, and I brought up an idea of a skate park to the mayor of Fraser, and over time, we were able to, we weren't able to build a skate park, but we were able to bring a bike park into Percival, just for the growth of the community and growth of the children. And then partnering with him, he was, he was talking about a Western Loudon recreational center that would bring, and aquatic center that would bring something for the Loudon Valley and Wood Grove, where they, they don't have to travel to Idalie for their swim meets and all of that, but also bring something that would be growth for the whole community. You know, back before, I remember 10 years ago or something, Russ Library was just a small library, and then we created Idalie, which has been a benefit to the whole community. And I am not coming, if I, if I had planned better, I would, I would have dressed better. But I, I am partnered with the mayor on this idea of a Western Loudon Aquatic Center. It's something that, you know, growth is inevitable, but if we, if it's done right, it does, it does benefit the community. And I just wanted to bring that idea forward, and maybe, I don't know where this idea would grow on. Last time, I just walked in, and somehow, with God, we brought a bike park to Percival that's going to benefit the future children. And, yeah, so, Western Loudon Aquatic Recreational Center, it's not just an idea for me, it's something for the community, it's something for Wood Grove and Loudon Valley, and for the, for them to be able to have swim meets where they don't have to travel to Idalie all the time, they would have something more local for both schools, and also recreational center around that area. That's my.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Mr. Benjamin, before you walk out the room, will you walk to the back and look back through that young man with his hand up? See, look in the back. Will you go back there and, until you walk and exchange, that's my, that's my chief of staff. I'd like you to go exchange information with him, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
All right. That was all of our speakers for this evening. Supervisors, we're going to do the item on, on the study of, of marijuana, the impacts of legalizing marijuana in Loudon County. So if Mr. Sullivan can come to the table, if Mr. Graham can come to the table, but as well, if Mr. McNerney can come to the table, and if the head of the CCJB, of the, of the chair of the CCJB is here, I'd like them to come to the table as well. As they come to the table, Supervisor, let me say that I asked this, this is the BMI that I asked for. When I asked for it, it was under one governor, and we, we now have another governor, and so, you know, there have been some changes in, or some attempted changes in the law. But, but, but thank you all for coming. The reason I asked for this is a couple of things. One, you know, as, as across the country, we start to not just decriminalize marijuana use, but legalize marijuana use, what we know is that marijuana is not nearly as studied as, say, nicotine and other substances. And so, the, the question is, is, is no longer, does one want it legalized, does one want it decriminalized? Those questions are being answered by legislative bodies all, all around the country, and each state will do what they think they should do. The question is more about how does that impact each county, county by county, and at what point and how do we start studying the effects of marijuana to somebody, to a baby in utero? The cancer effects of marijuana on certain types of cancer, if that is, if that is true. And so, as we move into a place where we are decriminalizing and legalizing this substance, it's also important to do it with, with facts, with science, with research, with data, to the extent possible. And I think when we've read this today, we've realized that there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff we don't know, right? There's a lot of unknown still. And that is, and, and truthfully, when I think about our board, think about this board. We have on this board, as your chair, a substance abuse professional. We have two attorneys. We have a, a police officer who's probably interacted with people who We have a police officer who's probably interacted with people who may have been using before. We have a special education teacher. We have, we have one of the most, as far as experiences, diverse boards probably in the Commonwealth. So if there is a board and a county that should lean into doing the research on this substance and how it will look if it is decriminalized and further legalized, I think it's our board to do that. And so I really, really do, this is an amazingly good white paper. So I really do thank all of you for all the work you've done. And we're ready for the report you will give us, and then we will go to questions. Mr. LaTurner and Ms. Bricksman, I will come to you first for questions, then I'll go to the deists for questions. We're ready when you are. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chair Randall. Good evening. Members of the board.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm just a little froggy. I'm getting there. I'm Chip Sullivan, Director of Loudoun County Community Corrections, and I have the pleasure of introducing my colleague, Mrs. Margaret Graham, Director of Loudoun County Mental Health, Substance Abuse and Developmental Services. At this time, I will turn things over to our two chairs to introduce themselves and our item.
Very good.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name is Guy Petuchek. I serve as the Chair of the Community Criminal Justice Board. We partnered with the Community Services Board to assess the impacts of legalization of marijuana on both our public safety as well as community services. I'm here with Mr. Neil McNerney, who led the CSB's portion of the study. Thank you for the opportunity to present our findings. Members of the CCJB and CSB reviewed studies across states that have legalized marijuana in an effort to determine the impacts on communities, their public safety services, as well as community services provided by those states. Laws legalizing marijuana vary greatly per state, is the summary of what we found. Over the past decade, there has been a movement to decriminalize marijuana than to legalize medicinal marijuana use, and more recently, to legalize non-marijuana, non-medical marijuana. In 2012, voters in Colorado and Washington approved measures to legalize marijuana for recreational use. Following these two states, measures to legalize recreational use of marijuana have passed, including in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So there's different types of legal measures, chairs, you referenced. At times, states have moved through different legal phases successively, and that makes studying the impact of one legal phase in such a short duration very difficult to draw specific correlations and conclusions. States may vary in their legal approach, such as decriminalization, legal medical marijuana, legal non-medical marijuana, and then retail marijuana sales. Effective July 1, 2020, marijuana possession was decriminalized in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Less than a year later, the Commonwealth began the process of legalizing marijuana for recreational use, so a very short period of time, three years earlier than originally intended. After legislation became effective July 1, 2021, Virginia became the 18th state and the first southern state to legalize recreational use of marijuana. Pursuant to the adopted legislation, an adult defined as age 21 may possess up to an ounce of marijuana and cultivate not more than four marijuana plants for personal use. Additionally, an adult may gift up to one ounce to another adult. Certainly, certain possession thresholds result in either civil or criminal penalties. Possession over one ounce is subject to a civil fine, while possession of a pound or more of marijuana becomes a criminal offense. Marijuana use is prohibited in public areas, and driving under the influence of the drug may also lead to criminal charges. Understanding the data used to tell the story of the impact of legalization of recreational marijuana use is complex, and there's a myriad of in details. First, statewide data may not tell the story since the elements of each state law do not mirror each other, and some states passed measures that granted authorities to each county locality to pass measures either approving or prohibiting recreational use in that jurisdiction. A second consideration in analyzing the data is to avoid looking at data that only represents what has occurred since legalization, and neglects to look at trends leading up to legalization. In the absence of using pre-legislation trends, the data may inadvertently tell a story of increased use due to legalization. However, the correct data story may be increased use pre-legalization led to the legalization. Within the paper, there are details of the studies pertaining to hospitalization rate, emergency department visits, impact on behavioral health, poison control, major law enforcement impacts, and drug court. After careful review and discussion, we concluded the totality of the studies needs to be considered and not just a single study. There is limited data that truly identifies a causal relationship between legalization and a specific topic, and the use of the data to predict impacts is constrained by the very nuanced targeted focus of a study and the variations between state-level reports. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. McNerney to provide an overview of the behavioral health impacts before I summarize the criminal justice impacts.
So detailed in the paper presented to the Board of Supervisors, there are studies which contradict other studies, and even some studies that demonstrate that there's no influence on legalization when it comes to mental health, substance abuse, issues within organizations. Studies to either support or refute the claims about impact tend to measure one specific element, for instance, depression, and then claim a broader scope, such as overall mental health. Or they relied on self-report without using the same instrument across all states. These issues with existing studies make it difficult to draw any conclusions about the effects of legalization. It's also important to note that association is not causation, especially when it comes to mental health, that mental health conditions might drive some people to use marijuana rather than the marijuana use causing the mental health condition. And also, oftentimes, we are confounded by the issues of alcohol within those individuals that are also using marijuana. Therefore, we were unable to conclusively predict the mental health and substance abuse effects of legalization on Loudoun County residents based on other jurisdictions' data. We also detailed the neurological effects of marijuana on youth. And however, you know, although we know that the neurological effects of marijuana on youth are specific and are definitely information that we know is true, the change of legalization within jurisdictions that have legalized marijuana, we were unable to see that there was an increase or a decrease due to the different studies and the way the studies were handled. Lastly, what I want to highlight is the staff's hard work on this initiative. We are an organization, two organizations of volunteers, and there is no way we could have produced the information that we had and be able to present this information to you without the hard work and the expertise of the staffs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Graham, did you want to add anything before we go back to Mr. Petuchek? No?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Petuchek.
The CCJB participants of this BMI focused on major public safety impacts that were consistently cited between the state reports and literature published by both advocates and opponents of legalization. The trending information was limited to the wide regulatory variations between the states, and some states simply lack studies measuring the impact due to the recency of legislation. The commonalities we saw between all states and stakeholders included a concern about how to reliably detect impaired driving, the rise in illegal farming and black market sales associated concurrent with legalization, and increased arrests for harder drugs such as fentanyl, methamphetamines, cocaine, and heroin. The primary concern referenced in every state study was the ability of police to detect drivers impaired by marijuana. Standard field disparity tests do not necessarily work, and the odor of marijuana can no longer be considered a probable cause. Marijuana can be detected in the user system for days after use, and therefore is not always sufficient to indicate intoxication at the level of, at the time of a traffic stop. Colorado and Washington both reported increases in traffic fatalities and polysubstance use in DUI citations after legalization. Virginia does not currently have a threshold for marijuana impairment, thus, use of THC while driving may be underreported in Virginia's statistics. The concern regarding illegal farming and black market sales raised by law enforcement as well as legislation, as well as legalization advocates, should be of particular interest allowed and due to our agricultural industry. Illegal farming farms produce higher quantities of more potent marijuana, and of course, without any quality control or lab testing. These markets undercut the legal market while making traditional enforcement more difficult. The illegal farms are frequently operated by drug trafficking organizations, which may introduce other societal, social problems to communities, and the use of small towns as distribution hubs appear to be a growing pattern. Very frequently, excess illegal marijuana has been diverted throughout the country. The only common crime rate trend reported across state studies that have legalized marijuana is an increase in arrests for more harder drugs. The effects on crime rates reported across the states that have legalized marijuana does not provide any correlation with marijuana legislation, so it's possible that they diverted investigations to harder drugs, not that increased use led to increased use of other Finally, we do not expect any impacts on Loudoun Drug Court as participants are prohibited from using marijuana as a condition of the program. The Loudoun Drug Court completion rate is approximately 50%, which aligns with the national average. The Virginia J-Larke Study does project up to an 80% reduction in marijuana arrests since the most common offense was previously possession. However, since they decriminalized two years ago, that possession rates have gone to zero in the last couple of years. The typical sentence seen for a possession conviction was fines and probation, and incarceration is consistently tied, was consistently tied to more serious charges. At this point in time, there's very little action from the General Assembly during the most recent session, and most bills were deferred for a year or did not make it out of committee. Mid-2023 would be the earliest possible date for resales to start in Virginia. Lawmakers from both parties remain greatly concerned about the development of a black market in Virginia. And thank you very much for the opportunity to present the information, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Well, first of all, thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. LaTurner and Ms. Bricksman. I could probably have questions for the next hour, to be quite honest. We'll try not to do that, though. Mr. LaTurner, do you have any questions?
So this may not have been exactly what we charged you to look at, but from a planning and zoning standpoint, do we have to treat marijuana distribution as any other retail
I can answer that we did not study that, as it was outside of the scope of our work. I apologize, but that's not something that we studied.
No, I mean, that's okay. I would be interested in having a kind of a subsequent discussion about that. We have complaints. We just heard the advisory commissioner and he was complaining about vape shops and their proliferation, and I'm sure that from a, you know, zoning standpoint, there's probably a limit to what we can do there, but I'm curious whether we need to create a new category of retail establishment and what options we might have for where that would go. So, you know, basically, it sounds like the literature review kind of reveals that there's mixed, you know, mixed outcomes here in terms of prevalence. Was there any further discussion, any technologies that may make it easier to detect the presence of marijuana while driving? That remains one of my biggest concerns about this.
I would say not at this time. I think right now, officers are relying on their training and also on the job training. You know, I'm not aware of anything that would allow that beyond a blood draw.
Yeah, and it is obviously still permissible to pull somebody over and potentially ticket them for driving under the influence of marijuana, right?
I'm sorry, can you?
He says it's still permissible to pull somebody over for driving under the influence of marijuana.
You know, that's probably more of a sheriff's office question. I would hate to answer that wrong. I believe if there was a suspicion of driving under the influence, you know, then they could pull that person over. But I think, absent seeing marijuana.
But what about, so we have like an open container law, where if somebody has an open container of alcohol in the car, that's not permissible. What about possession of marijuana in a car? Is there, you know, how is that addressed? Or that's also maybe outside your scope?
I would defer that to the sheriff's office. I can tell you, I did ask, and it was my understanding, if the marijuana was in plain view in combination with improper or concern driving, that they might be able to take action. But ultimately, I think that's probably more of a sheriff's office question.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bricksman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I definitely appreciate the report that you guys put together. It was very, very interesting to read. Just to clarify, I think the previous General Assembly wanted to legalize at an accelerated pace than was originally decided, but I think I just heard you say that it's not till 2028 now.
What I say that was earliest day would be 2023, just based upon where the bills were left off in the last general, in the last session.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you so much for clarifying that. Then we will have to be making decisions sooner rather than later, so I'm really glad to have this information. But no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Umstead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not, I'm not a fan of legalizing marijuana. But anyway, that said, is there any risk, and I think you all may have addressed this, of legalizing a drug resulting in it being more accessible to younger users, teenagers, et cetera?
The evidence from states that have legalized it previous to us don't show a specific trend towards increased use by youth. My own personal experience with the clients I work with is that those that are interested in using marijuana are using marijuana, whether it is legal or not, and those that are not interested are not interested. But the data that we were able to find does not support that there's an increase when there is a legalization within a state.
Thank you very much.
That's my experience too, as a substance abuse therapist, exactly my experience, yeah. Mr. Kersh, are you okay down there?
Yeah, I could say a lot.
Me too.
But I'm limited to three minutes, unless, of course, you forget to turn my time on, which would be even better. I appreciate the work that you've done on this. I don't, I, I'm a little bit suspect of some of the statistics in some of the studies that were brought out from other states. I know, I realize you guys didn't do those, you're just reporting a number of these. And quite frankly, there are other studies that I have seen with some somewhat different numbers in them. I will, just a couple of things to follow up on what was said. I agree with Ms. Umstead. I think it's a horrible idea for us to legalize marijuana in this state. Quite frankly, I work, I have been prosecutor or a defense attorney for practically my whole professional career, with the short exception of the time I was on the Hill as a lobbyist for a nonprofit. And I have seen the use and abuse of marijuana. I have seen how marijuana, for some, especially children, is a gateway drug, and quite frankly, should be discouraged. The other thing that I have noticed since it's been legalized, my courtrooms stink like crazy. It just smells horrible. I walked into the bathroom the other day, it smelled horrible. Quite frankly, because marijuana has a pretty pungent smell, I sit down in a public place now, and the person next to me reeks of marijuana. And just from a public nuisance perspective, it quite frankly irritates me. That's just me, okay? I used to, I knew what the smell was, not that I ever used it, but I knew what the smell was when I was a prosecutor, because you'd had it there, you had to use it as evidence, you knew what it was. Now it's just everywhere. And so that's pretty irritating. And I will tell you, from my personal experience, this is non-scientific, DUIs related to marijuana have definitely risen since it's been legalized here in Virginia. I've definitely received more. I've definitely received more of those. To answer Mr. Letourneau's question in terms of whether or not having marijuana in the car produces greater probable cause for arrests and whatnot, it really, it's the totality of the circumstances, whether or not someone who is exhibiting impairment after being stopped for some, perhaps could be for anything, as long as there's reasonable articulable suspicion to stop them, whether or not that goes to it, but certainly it is an element if a person is exhibiting signs of perhaps being high on marijuana, having shake, sitting on your seat or whatnot could potentially result in arrest. So I hope that helps answer some of the questions that you said refer to the sheriff's office. I think that's pretty much the answer to that. So, those are just some of my thoughts. I do appreciate you bringing us back and I'm really looking forward to what Chair Randall has to say.
You're probably not, but okay. Mr. Sains?
Well, first, say thank you to the, to the committee for their, all their work on this and bringing it back to us. I know it's been a, been a labor of love, I guess I could say, working on it since it was brought forward. It's a BMI from Chair Randall's office a few, it seemed like the beginning of the term?
Not that long, but yeah.
Yeah, seems like not long ago, but yeah. So we, thank you for that. I'm actually also glad to see that you reached out to NORMOL, the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws, to get some of their input and commentary regarding the report. Like some of my colleagues here, I do support the legalization of marijuana in not just the Commonwealth of Virginia, but nationally for the United States. So, glad we're here. Do we need to have some reform, some guardrails on it? Yes, we do. I think we've taken a step in the right direction. The General Assembly, I think they've kind of missed the, missed the mark a little bit on their, their implementation of the plans here in the Commonwealth, but hopefully we can get back on track with it. One question I did have is, one, where is it? Mentioned poly substances when you were on page, what is this? Page five, and when you're talking about the statistics for, for traffic incidents, accidents, excuse me. So what all does that cover? What is all covered under the Apollo substances?
Poly substances?
Poly substances, thank you.
Any, more than one substance at a time.
Okay, so that could be alcohol, marijuana, it could be, as you mentioned before, fentanyl and all the other very dangerous drugs that are out there.
That is correct. I would, I would add that a lot of the states that we studied really honed in on, on the combination of marijuana and alcohol.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong, there really is not a field sobriety test out there just for marijuana or are we, are law enforcement moving in that direction or is it still kind of in the scientific phase in research?
Well, the J-Lark study did reference drug recognition experts, which is a coursework that law enforcement officers can go through to be, to use other methods to detect impairment based upon vital signs and other measurements. The J-Lark study said Virginia's, I'll have to look at the studies, but we do not have the same, the same number of drug recognition experts as other states.
But technically, there is no field sobriety test similar to like alcohol that's out there right now.
Correct.
And they're working on it. So I think that we need to definitely look into that, but as you note in the report, I think we need to do some more, have some more studies and research done throughout the nation and continue to monitor the results of it. But thank you for all the work, all the work on this.
Okay. It's almost impossible to have a field sobriety test for marijuana because marijuana is a long half-life drug. It sits in your brain for a long, long time. If you get a field sobriety test and that, you have to go by that, you'd be arresting a whole lot of people for over days and days and so that's not, it's not, it's not even, it's not a realistic thing to ask for. On page four, there's something really interesting when we talk about, quite frankly, when we talk about race when we use these, and drugs, the fact that the, the largest reduction of race, of arrests for people who use marijuana in Colorado was 72% of white people had the reduction of race, 63% of Hispanics and 55% of African, 62% of African Americans, 55% of Hispanics, even though blacks were more than double that of whites. In other words, when arrests were happening, blacks were arrested at double the rate. Since marijuana has been legalized, the largest reduction is, is white people, which means the whole notion, the whole notion of this is, is will help people of color not be arrested if it's legalized, is right out the window. If there's one thing that actually is a stat on here, that stat is out the window. That just makes no sense. That's, that's just, that's ridiculous. The poly substance use question is an interesting question because there are some substances you're probably not going to drive while you're using them, right? You're probably not. You drive with alcohol, you're probably not gonna, you're probably not gonna shoot up and then drive. You're gonna go, you're not. If you don't die, you're gonna go sleep because of the type of drug that it is. There's also no consideration that this is not your grandfather's Woodstock marijuana, right? This is a whole different, this is not weed, is not. This is like, this is like killer weed and loud and this, this is, this is different marijuana. And so we're looking at this like we're looking at 1970 marijuana. This is not that. And so we have to understand that and understand that marijuana has hallucinogen effects. And so if you are driving with, under this influence, you're gonna have, depending on who you are, you have hallucinogen effects. I think the point of this whole moment was that this has not been studied and we have taken this substance and put it in a political realm when it should be in a health realm. And my, my fear is because everything that's legalized is minimized, we have not studied this substance enough to know what happens now that we've legalized it. And so, you know, it took us decades to get to the point where we knew how harmful nicotine was and we had a lot of lobbyists against it. We have no idea what we're doing yet. We have no idea what we're doing and we have got to stop. First of all, we should stop putting people in jail for using marijuana. Stop it. Stop it. But secondly, can we stop, stop politicizing everything? This is a medical discussion and a treatment discussion, much more than it is a criminal discussion. I could do this all day long. I won't. I will say to the staff, thank you. To the committee, thank you. This is the first salvo in this discussion. We've got a long way to go, but thank you so much. Okay, you can leave. We're done. Thank you. We're gonna do an action item before we go on break. Woo-hoo, jazz hands. When's the last time that's happened? Jazz hands. The whole board should be jazz hands in an action item before we go on break. I'm saying, I'm saying. All right, the item we're going to do, out of order of what's on the agenda, is the JK item. We're gonna do the JK item, a little out of order, and let me tell you why. When I make the agenda, I set things on the agenda as they kind of get complete and finished and what that means is sometimes when people or applicants are working on the agenda to the very last moment because they're doing things we've asked them to do, they get, they land on the agenda last, which is kind of not fair because they land on the agenda last because they're working so hard. So that was brought to my attention and so I'm gonna try to work on that to restructure the agenda sometime so that the people and applicants who are working on the agenda the hardest and doing some of the things we're asking them to do are not sitting here with us all night to wait to have their agenda item heard. So, I know, I'm seeing in general. So we're gonna do, this is not the only action item though. So we're gonna do the JK item and we do have considerable updates on this item and so this is in Mr. Letourneau's district, no, Mr. Buffington's district, Mr. Buffington, I would like to get some kind of report only because there's so many updates, so if that's okay with you? Okay. Staff, we're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. Presenting the JK3 item will be Marshall Brown, who is online, and I just need to confirm, Shalom, do you need us to run the PowerPoint?
Give us one second to get that.
Okay.
Can you hear me and can you see the presentation?
We can hear you and see the presentation, Mr. Brown.
Wonderful. Again, my name is Marshall Brown with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I will go over some of the updates for JK Technology Park number three. Again, this site is located in the Blue Ridge District off of Stone Springs Boulevard. The request is to rezone 21.23 acres from the RC zoning district to the planned development industrial park zoning district to develop all by right uses. Since this item was last before the board, there have been a number of updates, especially to the design proffers. We received detailed architectural design proffers which were requested both by the Planning Commission and by staff. Parking areas and open spaces are shown now on the CDP, including an employee open space which has now been proffered and is also depicted on the CDP. Height has been lowered to 55 feet for the primary structure, that's down from 60 feet. There is also a secondary structure identified on the CDP, which is 40 feet in height. There have also been additional landscape buffering added to the east and to the west, primarily abutting the Legacy Village core of Arcola and a portion of the future Dulles West Boulevard frontage. Additional land uses have been proffered out and the habitat study proffer has been revised to incorporate some of the staff's recommendations which are specific to this application. So this is a view of the revised CDP. You can see the location of the enhanced buffers, the development envelope. Mechanical screening has also been depicted on site, which is highlighted on the screen. Parking and the employee open space have been identified. Staff does, originating from the outstanding issues presented to the board at the public hearing, staff has identified additional recommendations which we think are worth consideration but not worth consideration of denial. Part of that was to identify the location of data centers or warehouse uses and put those uses to the far end of the subject property away from the Legacy Village core of Arcola. This recommendation originates from the fact that there is no identified user for the site. So if this property were to develop in a manner that is consistent with the land use pattern and scale of the village of Arcola, if there are uses that would be considered conditional uses or incompatible with the Legacy Village core, to move those to the farthest side away from the village. Additionally, while the applicant has lowered height to 50 feet, or to 55 feet, rather, staff would suggest an additional five feet to 50 feet to bring it closer to what is found in the Legacy Village core of Arcola. That being said, with the revision, staff canceled the approval of the application as most of the outstanding issues have been sufficiently resolved. I am happy to take any questions.
No? We're good? Yeah, okay. Supervisors, we can do this within a motion, which means we can actually get one more action item done before we take break. So I, I think we've had this discussion on, on this item for, I don't know, four or five years or something. So how about we go, go straight to a motion and then have discussion within the motion? Being that this is in the Blue Ridge District, I will go to Mr. Buffington for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a motion. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve ZMAP 2019-0016 JK Technology Park number three, subject to the proffer statement dated July 11th, 2022, and based on the findings for approval provided as attachments one and two to the July 19, 2022 Board of Supervisors Business Meeting action item.
Thank, thank you. That motion has been made. Second, Mr. Supervisor Umstead, discussion on the motion, Mr. Buffington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you sort of hinted at, this is almost a brand-new application because of all of the work that's gone into it since our last meeting, so it's come a long way. I'm excited that it's now supported by staff and I'm also excited for confirmation from the applicant that there will be no new substation either onsite, which they've proffered out, or offsite needed, which they got confirmation from both power companies, that there will be no new substation needed for this. So very happy about that. In addition to removing the prior specs applications that were originally included with this and being consistent with the 2019 comp plan and other commercial and industrial uses in the area, we get some really good proffers, including restricting the Stone Street and Stone Springs Boulevard entrance to emergency access only once Dulles West Boulevard is built. If this were to go by right, that would not occur. A signal study at Dulles West Boulevard and Stone Springs Boulevard. Dulles West Boulevard entrance enhancements, onsite archaeological site preservation and a 50-foot wide trail along the South Fork of the Broad Run. In addition to that, we got more proffers since our last meeting to include stronger habitat study language, 10 more proffered out uses, enhanced building design, further reduced building heights. I think they've come down from 85-foot original request down to 55-foot now and then the secondary building is only 40-foot. Enhanced landscaping and additional tree buffering on the Dulles West Boulevard side, enhanced buffer along the northeast corner of the parcel adjacent to the Legacy Village of Arcola, new onsite outdoor gathering space with picnic tables and benches and onsite bike rack. And then outside of proffers, I know from speaking to the applicant that they're working in hopes of providing pavilion and picnic tables on the public side of the Capretti application just north of this that we've been talking about. And they're also going to provide a cash donation of $100,000 to the county's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And so with that, I'll leave it to my colleagues to make their comments and I'll save some additional comments for my closing, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Letourneau?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not supportive of this application. That won't come as a surprise. I thought perhaps that this would be the one time in this area the board might say no, but it does not appear that that will be the case. If approved, we've taken the village of Arcola and surrounded it with JK1, JK2, JK3, the Google campus, Framington South, all around Briar Woods Estates, Hiddenwood Lane, Windsbury, South Fork and Arcola Center Residential. It's difficult in this area, I understand, because there is lake development nearby, but the zoning, the base zoning is rural commercial and this is a rezoning to PDIP. This property is distinctly separate from other industrial zone properties in the area and I don't believe it would complement the other development located directly on Stone Springs Boulevard, which is residential to the north and of course, as you know, potentially residential adjacent to this. The biggest issue that we have when we have data centers and housing is when we mix it together and that's what we've done here with this application. So the JK2 application was separate from this. It was across the Broad Run floodplain. I've never thought that staff has appropriately recognized the difference that that floodplain makes in separating that site from, from the rest of the development, which is not a feature that we have in this application. That floodplain is 450 feet wide and there's even 50 additional feet of river stream corridor resource management buffer. So there's 500 feet of separation on that property and we don't have that on this one. So I'm disappointed in this potential outcome. I, I really wish the board perhaps would at least consider deferring this item, given that the critical action date isn't until November, but I, I am not supportive and will not vote in favor of it.
Mr. Letourneau, in your time, let me ask you, what would deferring accomplish?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I'm having trouble with the button. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Did you hear my question?
Well, we could, yeah, I heard your question. Well, for one thing, I had asked the county attorney for findings, which he did not provide today, so the board does not have an alternate set of findings to consider. So that's, that's one item. The other item would be the issues that staff identified just now in the presentation as, as still outstanding on this.
So you're saying, okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Bricksman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll associate myself with many of the comments from my colleague Supervisor Letourneau. I am not in favor of this application. The Planning Commission vote was a little too close for me and two people weren't there at the time. I would rather wait for a response from the county I would rather wait for a response from the county attorney per Supervisor Letourneau's request, since the critical action date's not till November. But overall, I think that continuing to do this and approving these sorts of applications and specs are hurting our chances to diversify our economy, hurting our chances to balance our revenue streams. Squeezing out other opportunities, namely here, would be Flex Industrial, which, you know, Mr. Viser has told us that we so desperately need in the county, and also housing. I think we have too much residential nearby as well. So I will not be supporting this application. I would support deferring it to September. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bricksman. Ms. Umstead?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I will be supporting this. I want to thank the applicant for all the concessions and changes that he made to this application, and I appreciate staff's recognition of those changes and staff recommendation of approval. Supervisor Buffington has laid out what I think is a very strong case for this use in this location. You can always say, you know, we need to put more houses in on any site that might go commercial, whether data center or other commercial use, and eventually you just take up all the land with residential, and the opposition to any kind of commercial use grows. I like very much the fact that the applicant and the energy provider have verified that no substation will be required to handle this. In part, that is because this is a fairly relatively low megawattage facility. I think 18 megawatts compared to the average data center in the county being, I think, about 50. So you are going to see much less requirement for energy use with this facility than you might see with another, with a number of others. That is not generally a concern of mine, but I know energy use has been a concern for some of my colleagues. I think, given the fact, and Supervisor Letourneau stated it pretty well, given the fact that there are so many other data centers in the vicinity, this is a logical place to put this one, so I will be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been on the fence on this one from almost the beginning. It started long before we had the data series discussion and Transportation Land Use Committee. I said from the day I was at the last meeting where we talked about, I think it was a public hearing, that I couldn't understand why the applicant and the staff were still far apart on what I thought were relatively easily fixable things, and in the interim, the applicant has bridged that gap and addressed those, and with the predictable outcome that the staff now approves the application. So that sort of nudged me onto the favorable side. Last night at the Transportation Land Use Committee meeting, we had the third in the three-part series discussions on future data centers in Loudoun County where we want them, where we'd like to have some oversight. The outcome of that was in the suburban employment place type that we agree that data centers should be allowed if they have an application in the pipeline. There's a whole bunch more around that which we're going to hear at the second meeting in September, but it's difficult for me to vote to support that recommendation from staff last night and not support this application which fits that profile almost precisely. So I'll be supporting the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm certainly supporting the application. I supported it in its original form, but I think it's even gotten much, much better. It just makes a lot of sense. We've already got two that have been approved here, and as we all know, the way the data center industry is going is, the larger the campus, quite frankly, the better the location and the better the use, and the more efficient the use for the data center campuses. So, one, it makes a lot of sense. I have talked to those surrounding who are building homes in the area. There are really no huge objections. They can do their projects with no issues. Certainly, I think they appreciate what the applicant has done, and that has brought it down to 55 feet. I think that's substantial. The other thing I don't think jumps out as much, but it was very substantial, was the increased buffering landscaping that was agreed to since we last addressed this. And I think there were eight-foot trees, and, I mean, that's actually quite significant. I don't, it doesn't sound like it, but putting some of those trees in is a significant cost to the applicant, and I think that's one of the reasons staff, amongst others, has come around on this and said, yeah, this, we're okay with this application at the point. And I know our staff really scrutinizes these, and so when they're an A-okay on an application like this, I think we should really, you know, they are really, quite frankly, the experts, we're the policymakers, but they're the experts in really go through this, and we should really listen to them oftentimes. Doesn't mean we always agree with them, might not always vote for them, but I think in a situation like this, it makes a lot of sense. And the other thing I will note is, I went back, I think at public comment, there weren't any tonight against this application, and I think at public comment, there were a few against it, but none of them lived in this area. They were just people who were generally against data centers as a whole. And I think that's kind of significant as well, because there's been really little, very little opposition to this particular area, I think largely because kind of the way this is developed. Mr. Letourneau alluded to some of it. It's kind of an interesting area, and is trying to find its way on how it ultimately gets developed. But this makes sense. I certainly support it, and I hope my fellow colleagues will as well.
Can you put up slide number five of the presentations, please? Can you tell me what this is? What is that? This, right there, what is that?
Marshall, the smaller lots that are along Stone Springs Boulevard, can you answer what those are?
Can we stop my time through guitar?
Sure. Those lots are generally non-residential. They were originally developed as residential structures for the most part, but are not being used, all of them not being used as residences at this point in time. Some have been converted to commercial use.
All right, that's fine. Now that I know that, that's helpful. So I was not on the fence about this application. I was an absolute, absolute dead no when this application first came up because of a couple of things. One, and most importantly for me, was the height of the building, the 80 feet was, I thought, well too high, and the power usage was another issue that I'm having, that I was having, as well as some of the buffering. When we go out and say to an applicant, this is my issue, this is my issue, this is my issue, and this is why I'm a no, and the applicant meets to my satisfaction all of the things that I said were issues, I don't have a reason to vote no anymore. In other words, when circumstances change, I have to change with the circumstances. And so if I just stay with a no because I said it was going to be a no when the applicant changed from 80 to 55, when the applicant, 55 feet, when the applicant added buffering, that would be illogical. I also think if our legal staff had findings for denial that would hold water, we would know that. They had time to look at those findings, and if they had findings that would be enough to hold water, we would know that. I did ask to see the illustratives on this because I am pretty hard over about design standards, and I think that design standards today can look like, I'm sorry, data centers today can look like very nice office buildings. They don't have to be just big concrete blobs anymore. So I've seen the illustratives on this. I'm not sure if anyone else has, but I asked for them, so I saw them. So I have seen enough that I will be voting for this. I don't know that there's anybody in this board that's talked about the need to diversify our economy more than I have. I talk about it all the time, and I believe in it. I believe it. But I also believe that everything and more that I would have needed to be done to move me and to move the staff has happened, and it was a fairly, kind of a painful walk to get here, but I asked for it all. I got even more than I had requested. I will be a yes in this application. Mr. Buffington, do you have a closing?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just texted you a satellite image of this area that you asked about, and there are no residential units there. They were, at one time, residential units that had been turned into basically an industrial park. All of these are businesses. They all have numerous vehicles parked there, trucks, material storage, and such. So I did send you a picture of that. There's no one living there. Let's be honest, the delay request is simply a request to find more time to try and find a reason to deny this application, which makes no sense, because even staff has come around and now supports the application and says, "Staff supports board approval of the application, subject to the proffers, and based on the findings for approval in attachment two, the proposal is generally consistent with the policies of the Loudoun County 2019 general plan," which is the language they always use when it is consistent with the general plan. "The Office of the County Attorney has approved the proffers to legal form, and the application is ready for action." If it wasn't ready for action and there was a good reason to delay, staff would not say the application is ready for action, and staff would not be in support of the application. Supervisor Letourneau confirmed my previous point, which is that the application is surrounded by data. That's because it's a good area for data. That's why it's all by right data in most of the area that it's surrounded by. And he did mention a residential application that has been submitted just south of here. However, that parcel is also zoned by right data, and just because someone submits an application to try and do something else with it, doesn't mean we should hold it against someone else who's trying to do the industrial use, which is the proper use in this area. As you all know, the corridor is currently in the 65-plus airport noise area and will be in the future 60 to 65 noise area. But given its location directly west of the existing runway and future new runway, I hope that we are smart with this area and keep it zoned commercial as it currently is in order to protect the airport. You all have likely noticed the recent uptick in email traffic regarding airport noise complaints, and just yesterday, we all received one from a group of residents in my district in this area asking us to take action to restrict flight patterns into and out of the airport based on noise concerns because their homes were built in an area near here that they believed the noise is too loud. They want us to lobby the federal government and the FAA and make sure that when planes take off on these runways, they can do nothing but go straight for five miles before turning. Unreasonable. I do not support that. We're also dealing with several currently failing road intersections at both ends of Stone Springs Boulevard.
Mr. Buffington may want to wrap up.
I'm wrapped up.
You're wrapped up.
This is a great application, and it's right for this area.
Thank you. All right. The motion was made by Supervisor Buffington and seconded by Supervisor Umstead. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. If I'm hearing this right, I'm hearing Mr. Letourneau, Ms. Bricksman, Ms. Glass, and Mr. Sains are a no. So that motion will pass 5-4 with Supervisors Kirschner, Buffington, Umstead, Turner, and Chair Randall voting for the motion. All right. Supervisors, want to do the one more action item we have. Mr. Letourneau, I sent you a couple texts. So before we go into this item, let me say, Supervisors, I thought that the resolution on this item was sent out before, I thought it was actually gone out last week, and it wasn't, and so I'll have to do a suspension of the rules to do the item. We can vote no on the item, but I'd like to at least explain the item, and I have to suspend the rules to do that. Okay? So I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules to discuss item number eight. Motion's made and seconded by Supervisor Umstead. Discussion on the motion of suspension. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Wait, 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 hold on. Can I speak on?
On the suspension? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, of course you can.
Okay. So, yeah, the changing the rules makes it a majority instead of a supermajority, so I want to at least kind of say my piece a little bit, which is, I don't think the board should be considering this because it seems to be contrary to what the staff recommendation was. And I'd be happy on suspension to have that discussion, and I would ask, you know, for some dialogue about what we're trying to do before we get on the item.
Sure. I'm happy to do that. All right. So the staff, as you know, would have to say no to the ordinance, and what I am trying to do is to say that for the ideal of charitable giving in Loudoun County to be allowed through Labor Day, that we suspend, that we make an exception to our ordinance that says that during Labor Day weekend, there can be nonprofit organization and community groups raise funds for charities for critical needs in the county. We don't have this allowance anytime during the year, and I'm saying one weekend a year to allow for charitable giving.
I reclaim my time, though. To the county attorney, wouldn't that present an issue in terms of the board just simply deciding not to enforce a particular ordinance just for one weekend? I mean, couldn't we do this on everything, and isn't that something we really can't do?
So the ordinance, the resolution, rather, would allow, and this is coming from a board office, let's say, because we're talking about the validity of the ordinance. The resolution would allow the solicitation of charitable giving on county property, which would include right-of-way. And so the ordinance would, the resolution would suspend enforcement of the ordinance. We would let the sheriff's office know of that.
Yeah, that's not my question, Leo. So could I bring forward a BMI instructing that we suspend the ordinance on speeding for that weekend as well?
Mr. Letourneau, I'd have to look at each one on a case-by-case basis. I couldn't say that you could do that, no. And I do think that's different than the ordinance that we're talking about right now. What this is doing is just declaring that charitable giving during this weekend would be permitted on county-owned property and right-of-way.
For anybody?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll have more discussion here in a minute.
Ms. Bricksman, do you have anything to say on this is the suspension of the rules motion?
Well, since it was brought up, yes, ma'am, since it was brought up that this would be on county property or rights of way that are maintained by the county, if the county attorney wouldn't mind explaining to me what would constitute a right of way? Like, would they be out in the streets, or would they just be like around our buildings?
The county property would be around the building. The right-of-way would include that property next to the roadway outside the lanes of traffic and the medians, which is where the charitable solicitation had occurred in the past. Now, it may also include use of the lanes of traffic where, right now, we prohibit the transaction of any business between the lanes of traffic, the medians, or the sidewalk.
So that's owned by VDOT, isn't it? But it's a county right-of-way? Is that why we have control over it?
There's VDOT property. The road has been, roadsways have been dedicated to VDOT for maintenance purposes, but for law enforcement purposes, the county has then ordinance restricting the transaction of business.
Got it. Okay, thank you. No more questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Sains?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, yeah, please clarify. So is this for the property out here in the front, or are you saying anywhere in the county, for example, in the Sterling District? I know one popular spot a few years ago was in front of the Burlington Co. factory off of Route 7. So are you saying that's, that would be allowed if this was passed, or is it just going to be county property in front of the building here? Can you clarify that? That's one clarification for me. Go ahead.
Mr. Rogers?
So it would be any county property, including property in Sterling. I'm not sure of the specifics near Burlington on Route 7. If it's in the right-of-way, it would be allowed. If it was on private property, you'd have to get the permission of the property owner.
Okay. And then also reading the resolution, it says specifically September 2 through September 5, 2022. So is this resolution's only for this year, or is this going to open it up for?
It's only for this year.
It's only for this year. So then, so let me ask Chair Randall, so is the point of this to do every single year we do a resolution like this, or just doing it for one time?
I would consider that. I would consider that.
So we would go through this exercise every year?
We would if we need to.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you're talking about nonprofit organizations to raise funds. So can you give me an example? Would it have to be a 501(c) or is it anyone or is it a particular group that we're, groups of organizations that we're talking about?
You could not put a, you could not say that any organization who is a charitable organization could not do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would say that this is our ordinance. Like, this is not, this is not a state code. This is not a federal law. This is our ordinance. If we wanted to completely, completely reverse the whole ordinance, we could. And so saying we can do this for a traffic, for a speed, a speed limit, a speed limit's not set by this board. This ordinance is an ordinance set by this board. We could completely take the ordinance away, which is, I think there's no desire to do that. I'm actually saying for one weekend, for three days, to allow charitable giving in the county and right-of-ways. That's it. That's all, for three days, once a year. That's all I'm saying. So on the suspension of the rules, which is what we're doing right now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion will pass 8-1 with Mr. Laterno voting no on the suspension of the rules. All right. I'm gonna make then a motion. I move the Board of Supervisors to approve the resolution declaring Labor Day weekend from September 2nd through September 5th, 2022 as charitable giving weekend.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Did you see me looking at you? Motion, motion was made and seconded by Mr. Kirchner. Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. By Mr. Kirchner. You know, I have mixed feelings about not allowing charitable giving in the county in general. Another word for sometimes what this could be called is panhandling. That's kind of the colloquial word. It feels a little bit like we are, we in Loudoun County have outlawed being poor. And I don't particularly like that anyway. And so I have thought about bringing a resolution to reverse this ordinance in its entirety. But I don't, I haven't had discussion with the public. I haven't had discussion with my colleagues. I haven't had discussion with staff and back to, I haven't had discussions with the public. And I think there's reasons to do that and there's reasons, quite frankly, to not do that. I think that's a fair statement. But I also think that to say one weekend a year, for three days, we allow charitable giving in this county is not unreasonable. And I do not believe that it will open up any Pandora's Box and I do not believe that it will change the culture of the county for anything but the better, to be quite honest. And, you know, Loudoun County has literally one of the highest median incomes in the country and one of the lowest charitable giving rates in the country or in the area. And I think that's because there's an assumption that there's not need in this county. And that assumption's based on us saying all the time, "We're a rich county, we're a rich county, we're a rich..." We are a rich county, but we have significant need in that county, this county as well. So either in right-of-ways and public lands or on public lands or wherever to say, "One weekend, one weekend we can do this." And oh, by the way, this ordinance doesn't exist in Leesburg. The town of Leesburg allows this to happen all the time. And I don't think Leesburg has fallen into any cesspool or anything like that. This is just in the county. This is not even in our towns. And so I think this is a reasonable compromise and a reasonable thing to do. But more importantly, I also think it's the right thing to do. For this weekend, for particular purposes, I think this is the right thing to do. And I don't, and I believe, and I have talked to some constituents about just this weekend, and I've gotten nothing but positive feedback. So I would, and I say, this is maybe the first time I've said these words this term because I don't say these words. I would appreciate my colleague's support on this. Mr. Buffington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a good one-time trial and I like, I like that you did it for just one time and not every year going forward because it gives us an opportunity to see how it goes. See how it goes this year. If it goes well, we'll do it again next year. If not, we don't. So I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Laterno?
So I'm just gonna read from the staff report. It says, "After studying the issue presented by the BMI, staff does not recommend making any amendments to chapter 440-04. Codifying an exception to the restrictions in the ordinance could lead to a challenge to its validity based on the issues outlined, while staff does not believe that 440-04 in its current form attempts to regulate speech, adopting an exception to the application of the ordinance and opening the door to permitting specific groups to solicit in roadways would implicate free speech rights. I know we're now trying to do this differently, but I think we're doing the same thing. We're creating an exception. It's just an exception for a time period instead of for a particular purpose. And I do believe that that does at least warrant a closed session discussion about the actual implications for the underlying ordinance." The second piece of this for me is simply that, and the chair has always passionately defended that the firefighters and the Phil the Boot have been a huge supporter, and I respect the heck out of what they do, but I have always had real major concerns with that program and that's really what this is about. It does open it up to absolutely anybody, so anybody in the county can do anything in terms of solicitation on any kind of public road. But putting people out in the middle of the street at our busy intersections is a safety issue. And it was when it was going on, it was in other places, and it would be once again. And I did get lots of complaints about it when it went on. We can go back in time when that was the thing in my first term, but we did get a lot of complaints about it because it did slow down traffic. It created a real diversion for drivers, distracting, distracted driving is a real issue. But now you put folks in the middle of the median collecting, you know, especially people in uniforms, oftentimes with apparatus that had sirens and lights on. It really created a lot of problems with chaos at a lot of busy intersections. And I don't want to go back to those days. I wish like heck we could find a way to do this in a way that would allow them to make up some of that money. I know they've tried over the years and I know that's their motivation, so I'm not at all questioning that. But I could not live with myself if one of these folks got hurt doing this. And I understand they're the ones taking the risk. But, you know, we did have a significant issue with panhandling in the county. We have a lot of resources for folks who need them. We go out of our way to try to help those folks. We don't have a lot of it in the county and we've been able to divert a lot of people into our resources. So, you know, when you look at all that, I don't want to threaten the underlying ordinance by doing something like this to get back to a time where we had a terrible effort that I thought was not safe and created distractions for drivers. So all the way around, I'm not supportive.
Thank you. Ms. Bricksman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can see both sides, so I haven't decided yet. Thank you.
Mr. Kirchner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To answer Mr. Laterno's point in terms of free speech, the way we're doing it now by creating, will not implement speech rights because you don't discriminate against one group versus another. It's just like you could say one day that Muslims can do it and Christians can't. That would be obviously a violation of your religious freedom rights or preferring one organization over another, whereas in this particular case, we're just setting aside or alleviating the ordinance for one week. So much of the concerns that were expressed and that Mr. Laterno read from are not free speech implicated rights as this is currently presented by the chair. I also think it's a bit of a stretch to say, hey, we had a problem with panhandling before. We're gonna open it up for one weekend and all of a sudden, we're gonna now have a problem with panhandling. I just don't think panhandlers are gonna say, wait around and for that one weekend of the year and just say, hey, we're gonna start doing this. So I just don't, I don't see that. I think it's worth a try. I think it certainly is something and, because remember the collateral damage in all this when this ordinance was passed was ultimately some really good organizations, as was mentioned by Mr. Laterno, that really couldn't do that anymore. They couldn't go out unless, of course, you're in Leesburg or other places that do allow within your, within your towns. So I don't think it's gonna be a huge issue. Obviously, if it is, it's something that's a one-year thing and we won't have to do it again. So I certainly am supportive of it at this point. Don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Ms., it's this, did you want the motion?
Mike needs it.
Okay. There you go. Mr. Turner?
I have nothing.
Ms. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I do support this. I think this is a great idea, especially if it's just one weekend. And I would, I would agree with Supervisor Buffington. Let's go ahead and give this a try. I remember this occurring years ago of, you know, organization out there, out there for charity and, you know, under what I saw, I really didn't see, you know, issues with that. So I'm really in support of it. Thank you.
Mr. Sains?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, one for, will say I do not want to go back to the days of just letting panhandling happen all over. It still happens right now, but I don't think it's as much as it used to be because we have done a good job cracking down. I do understand the reasons behind this resolution and, you know, definitely support the nonprofits, want to make sure they're raising funds to support these great organizations that are out providing services to our community. So with that, I'm torn, so I'll be honest with you, I'm gonna abstain from the vote because I'm torn for it. Thank you.
First of all, if the staff's recommendation was the only thing that carried the day, then the last vote we took would have been an 8-0 vote. Because then the last vote we took, the staff recommended yes and there are people voting no. So the staff recommendation carries water, but it's not the only thing that carries the day because all of our votes are not exactly what the staff says. So let's be a little bit realistic about that. I actually remember when charitable organizations did collect during Labor Day and Mr., Ms. Laterno was on the board then. So he is the only person on the board who was on the board then who would have received complaints. And I believe that you did receive complaints, Mr. Laterno. But I also believe that, you know, for the people who are complaining, who are complaining for one weekend over a weekend, a holiday weekend of, you know, that the traffic is going to be impeded because charitable giving is going on, they're probably gonna complain about something no matter what anyway because that's just, I mean, that's amazing that people would stop and complain about this. I don't, and I did do significant research, have not, and I could be wrong, have not ever read of or known of one person to die during this particular weekend for this type of charitable giving. I do hear you and I do think that, you know, when I'm driving down the street in Leesburg, I see a lot of little kids on the side doing the car wash, I'm always thinking, scoot back, scoot back, little kids, because they are, they are right at the side of the road, like one step and they're in the street and I always want them to push back. But, you know, the ideal that, and by the way, for one particular organization, I have seen apparatus. I've never seen lights and sirens when this is happening, maybe, but I've not seen lights and sirens. So I don't, I think was, Mr. Buffington makes a point. We can see how this goes this year. Mr. Laterno, I know that you are in support of our nonprofits. You don't have to say that. I know that it's, that is a true statement for you and Mr. Sains. But I think we can see how this goes this year and see if, you know, if we get an inordinate number of requests, that, then we'll take that into account. I will say that when we stopped doing this activity years ago, I worked really hard to drive residents to where the nonprofit giving was happening and it was, it was a failed effort because people don't normally drive out of their way to find that place to do that giving. And, and so that was a failed effort. And so let's, let's, let's see how this goes this year and let's, let's hope it goes well. Motion was made by me, seconded by Supervisor Kirchner. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Abstain? Then that motion will pass if I heard right, 8-0-1 with no one voting against it and one abstention.
No, I've been trying to vote against it.
Oh, I didn't hear anything. I asked twice. I asked. Did I not give that best effort?
No, you didn't. I know. I can barely hear me.
Chair Randall, that was, that was awful. We had the...
Oh, oh, actually, ma'am, I just didn't want to hear what you said, so I just muted you.
I know. I figured.
That's, I did, I did that. I did that. Okay, that would be... 7-1-1 with Mr. Laterno voting against and Mr. Sains abstaining on the vote. Supervisors, let's do, let's do, no, thank you, nominations real quick before we leave. If you have a nomination, please stick your light on. You guys just stay right there. Have a nomination, please put your light on. My only, Ms. Laterno, you have a nomination? Ms. Bricks, Ms. Bricksman, you have nominations?
I do not, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I'm gonna withdraw the nomination for Ms. Welch because it was not needed at this moment for the CSB board. We will do board comments when we come back. We will go, we are going to do, well, at this point, we can do all of the closed sessions at this point. We can do all the closed sessions. We can stay here and do the closed sessions. We have to leave. And we haven't eaten yet either. So let's read into all the closed sessions and then come back, read out the closed sessions, do board comments. And I think that's it. What? I gotta, I gotta be on the plane at 5:30 in the morning, so this is real cool with me. Mr. Hensry, I promised you by 11. I'm gonna meet that promise, I think.
We're not, we're not done yet. Chair Randall.
I know, I know. Well, thank you. Yeah, he did?
Okay.
We're gonna read in the closed session.
All right. Move that the Board of Supervisors recesses public meeting and enter into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711a3 of the Code of Virginia to consider acquisition, disposition of parcels of property for public use in the Leesburg Election District. I move that the Board of Supervisors recesses public meeting and enter into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711a3 of the Code of Virginia to consider acquisition of parcel, parcels of property for the Blue Ridge Election District. Closed session number three. I move that the Board of Supervisors recesses public meeting and enter into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711a3 of the Code of Virginia to consider acquisition of parcel of, parcels of property for the Sterling Election District. And the last closed session number four, I move that the, I move that the Board of Supervisors recesses public meeting and enter into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711a3 and 2.2-3711a7 of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation and to consider acquisition of parcels of property for public use in the Cotton, Cotton Town Election District.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Buffington. Discussion on the closed session motions. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
How are we moving these two to closed session? Are we just gonna, they're just gonna drop off or?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Randall. So there is a separate closed session webex for them to log into.
Okay.
I understand your staff gave them those logins.
Wonderful. You guys have the logins for that session?
Only if they don't mute me.
I do, thank you.
All right. That motion will pass unanimously. Supervisors, we're going to closed session. While, as we're on our way out, let's meet the young people. They're pretty amazing. We are in closed session.
I sure can. A move that the closed session be adjourned, that the Board of Supervisors reconvene its public meeting, that the minutes of the public meeting should reflect that no formal action was taken in the closed session, and further move that the resolution certifying the closed session be adopted and reflected in the minutes of this public meeting.
Second.
Motion's made in second that Mr. Letourneau and Ms.
was taken in the closed session, and further move that the resolution certifying the closed session be adopted and reflected in the minutes of this public meeting.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. And Mr. Letourneau and Ms. Brixman are back on, correct? Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Will you please affirm, Mr. Letourneau?
Affirm.
Ms. Brixman?
I affirm.
Ms. Glass?
Affirm.
Mr. Kerschner?
Affirm.
Mr. Buffington?
Affirm.
Mr. Turner?
Affirm.
Vice Chair Sains?
Affirm.
And I affirm as well. All people say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That motion will pass nine zero. There are two closed session motions. Mr. Buffington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Supervisors direct staff to advertise for the next available public hearing to consider the exercise of eminent domain to acquire certain property rights located on the property identified as follows. Parcel 001, pin number 162385163, Loudon Industrial Land Investment LLC.
Motion's been made and seconded by Supervisor Letourneau.
Yeah, second.
All right. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Buffington?
No, Madam Chair.
Discussion on the motion, anybody else? Seeing none, all people say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion will pass nine zero. We have one other motion, Mr. Kerschner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the Board of Supervisors approve $75,000 for the settlement agreement and property acquisition with Joseph M. and Rebecca A. Turner at 15774 Burke Hempstead Place in Selma Estates. I further move the county administrator or his designee is authorized and directed to execute such settlements, agreements, deeds, and other documents approved as to form by the county attorney to effectuate the settlement and acquire an easement over the Turner property.
Second. Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Buffington. Discussion on that motion, Mr. Kerschner.
Madam Chair, just so, I'm glad that we're putting this to rest for, hopefully for many of the residents there and in this particular one as well. So that's all.
Any other discussion?
It's a difficult issue.
Mr. Letourneau, Mr. Brixman, any discussion? I would associate myself with Mr. Kerschner's comments. All the people who say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion will pass nine to zero as well. We have just a few more things to do. If you have, if you have any disclosures you need to make, will you please do that, our board comments? Ms. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Thursday, June 23rd and July 1st, my staff and I met with Mike Romeo of Walsh-Kalouchi to discuss EMAP 2021-0007. July 7th, I met with Aaron Swisshelm to discuss special exception 2021-0039. July 8th, my staff met with Tony Calabrese to discuss Innovation Gateway. On Monday, July 11th, my staff met, attended PRAP 2022-0044, 2022-0043, and 2022-0046. On Tuesday, July 12th, my staff met with, and I met with Saschenka Brower of Walsh-Kalouchi to discuss JK Tech Part III. July 12th, my staff and I met with Dave Gregory to discuss possible land use applications on the Ryan Park property. July 15th, my staff met with Saschenka Brower of Walsh-Kalouchi to discuss JK Tech Part Number Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments that you'd like to make right now?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Kerschner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In terms of disclosures, I met with Chuck Coon, or spoke with Chuck Coon on the phone on July 15th concerning JK Three. That's my only mandatory disclosure, Madam Chair.
Any more comments?
Just a couple, just one, actually. I just wanted to let anyone who's watching still, even though it's not even late, so... That the Loudon County Fair, the great Loudon County Fair is coming up and starting on July 26th and running till July 30th. It's something near and dear to my heart. I've served on the Fair Board for quite some time. One of my staffers actually brought, she is the superintendent for the Fair Week, all volunteer, gets paid nothing for it, but does a tremendous job. And there's a lot of, gonna be a lot of fun things going on this week. My kids will be participating in the pig scramble, following in their father's footsteps because I caught my first pig in a pig scramble at a little fair in Union Maine. That's going to be taking, taking place on Wednesday, July 27th. So come if you'd like to watch, see if the Kerschner kids can follow in their dad's footsteps. There's gonna be a True Grip rodeo on Thursday, July 28th, live music by Costello on Friday, July 29th. There're gonna be a Firefighter show on Saturday, July 30th. There's gonna be a motorsport demolition derby and Power Wheels Derby on Saturday, July 30th. And the carnival, of course, is open from Tuesday to Saturday. And come and support the 4Hers to show them your support for all their hard projects, their various animal projects, and many of them, they have much of the agriculture that they've grown competing in the fair building itself. So it's gonna be a great time. Check the webpage out as well, just Google Loudon County Fair 2022. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Umstead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Required disclosure, I spoke on the phone with Chuck Coon on JK Technology Three on Friday, July 15th, and I have no board comments. Thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Buffington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. By way of disclosures, I had multiple conversations with Mr. Coon regarding his JK Three application since our last board meeting, and I hope everyone enjoys their August recess. We'll see you in September.
Thank you. Mr. Letourneau?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On July 6th, my staff spoke by phone with Packy Crown of Bowman regarding the Mountain View Residential Application, and also today, I sent a response to Mr. Coon from one of his emails to me. I'm sorry I couldn't be with everybody, which was for both your good and mine. I will be out of town next week, so I will have to miss the environmental summit. I'm planning on reading the packet before I leave if it comes out not too late on Thursday. And we'll provide any comments that we have through my office to the chair prior to the summit. That is it for me.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brixman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. By way of disclosures, my staff had a meeting with, I'm sorry, I'm working off my phone because my laptop died, the applicants for Cascade's Marketplace, just on that ongoing project. I also had a phone conversation with Chuck Coon on July 8th regarding JK Three. I'm excited to be out here to attend NACO and proud to be co-sponsoring a resolution in the Health Steering Committee on Reproductive Rights, hoping that it goes to the full NACO contingent for a vote. I've had a couple emails and comments about the plastic bag tax that went into effect on July 1st. I have to say, overall, it's been positive, and I've gone shopping a couple times and haven't really met with any consternation. People seem fine with it, and was very excited when I picked up my Wegmans, it was in a paper bag. So I think that that is going well, proud that we got that done. As of today, 24,275 victims have died because of gun violence in our country this year. Of those, 11,075 were homicide, 13,200 were suicide. We've lost 190 children aged 11 and younger, and 734 teens under the age of 18. Our nation has suffered 355 mass shootings this year. And that is all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brixman. We'll see you tomorrow. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wednesday, July 6th, my staff and I met with Michael Graff from 8HMI to discuss a bonding issue related to Genelia Research Campus. Thursday, July 7th, my staff and I met with Jim Perry and Nick Flanagan from Elm Street Development, Robbie Malm and Ken Malm from Craftmark, Lou Canonico from Christopher Consultants, as well as Aaron Swisshelm and Matt Leslie from Walsh-Kalouchi to discuss the application for Lansdowne Boulevard Rezoning. On Friday, July 8th, my staff and I met with Bill Junda, Matt Holbrook, John Moskow, Ross Stevens, Michelle Rosati, and Eric Topson, who were representing NAOP to discuss the zoning ordinance rewrite. Comments very quickly, T-LUC passed the Data Center Series item along with a recommendation of 311 last night to the board. We specifically are recommending it for the second September meeting. There was kind of a kerfluffle miscommunication, I'll take the blame for that. The data center community was under the impression that I had promised that we'd go to a fourth T-LUC meeting. In fact, I had said I need to check with staff because the zoning ordinance rewrite is critical and we can't slow that timetable down. I didn't get back to Josh Levy of the Data Center Coalition to close that loop and say we can't go to a fourth meeting. I audubled, and I said, let's split the baby and go to the second meeting in September, which is only a two-week difference from if we'd gone to a fourth T-LUC meeting. So that item is coming to the board, but I specifically in the motion asked staff to actively reach out to the data center community and get robust comments on what we came out of T-LUC with on the data center series. So it will come to us on the second board meeting in September, but it will also have included in the item all of the data center inputs they've gotten in the interim between then, last night, and now. The other thing I wanted to pass on is a discussion we had in T-LUC. The zoning ordinance rewrite now will go through the circuitous process of coming through, the process sequentially to get to us. Presumably, when it comes to the board, it'll go to T-LUC for a series of work sessions and then come back out. I don't know that we're gonna have that luxury. Everybody's very, very busy. I'm gonna talk to the chair of the Planning Commission and the vice chair, let them know that my intent is to watch every Planning Commission work session, public hearing, and Planning Commission meeting. I will take notes on those meetings, I'll talk with county staff after those meetings, and then I'll issue a summary to the board so everybody can sort of be abreast of what's going on. I got a document today from, who was it? It was 84 pages that I got of recommended changes to the zoning ordinance rewrite. It's encyclopedic right now, the recommended changes to the zoning ordinance rewrite. We have to get a handle on this. And along those lines, I've asked Mr. Hempstead if he can provide me a consolidated list of everybody's BMIs. I have told county staff, please, I don't have any BMIs that are urgent. I've asked them to put all of my BMIs on the back burner until the zoning ordinance rewrite is completed, which is the number-one project that we have to get done. And so I've asked that, please look at your BMIs, see if the ones that are urgent, and not all BMIs have anything to do with the zoning ordinance rewrite, and not all of them are time-intensive. And we can get some guides from staff, but talk to staff and find out if there are BMIs that you can hold off on until after the zoning ordinance rewrite is rewritten. I think that staff would appreciate that. And the zoning ordinance rewrite has just moved to the top of the pile. It has one more meeting in Zoc, and then we have a public hearing with the Planning Commission on August 30th, which is out of cycle. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kerschner, your light's still on, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, I forgot one disclosure, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I did have, last week, I did have a meeting with Packy Crown on the Mountain View application. Thank you.
Mr. Sains?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have one mandatory disclosure. My staff and I met with Innovation Multifamily Housing applicants on July 18th, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. My only disclosure is I had multiple meetings with Chuck Coon regarding JK Two, I'm sorry, JK Three. I've had multiple discussions with David Gregory regarding a community project he is trying to do at either his property in Bean Tree or his property in Leedsburg. Mr. Kerschner, I actually have already done the first event of the Loudon County Fair, which is the Miss Loudon County Pageant, which I crowned the winner, and I want to say congratulations to all three runners in the Miss Loudon Pageant. Little Miss Elizabeth Minui won the Little Miss Pageant, that's little girls who are ages eight through 11. The junior miss, ages 12 through 15, was her sister, Mary Grace Minui. And then the winner of the Miss Pageant, which is 16 through 19, was Morgan Krantz. And so I've already, we've already had the first event of the Loudon County Fair, which is, those young ladies are out of 4H, and the contestants in 4H are judged on their community involvement, their 4H involvement, and their extracurricular activities. And so it was really, was really kind of fun. Mr. Kerschner, also, I learned something this past week, and we're gonna come back next year at this time and talk about it. I learned that the Targets, the way they do their plastic bag taxes, if you use their plast, if you bring your own bags, they give you five cents per bag. If you, if you use a plastic bag, they charge you five cents a bag. And so you always talk about incentives. What Target is trying to do, incentives, they'll give you five cents. And so in a year, I wanna see if we can, we can compare Target numbers to other numbers to see, you know, does, do incentives work better? And then tell all other stores to start giving out five cents per bag, because I thought that was really interesting, the way Target chose to do that. Tomorrow starts the National Association of Counties Conference. I haven't talked about it much from the dais because, I don't know, I haven't. I am seeking the office of second vice president of NACO, which will then, the way that works is the person who wins second vice president rises to first and then, and then president. NACO is an organization of all 3,096 counties in the country, and the president, when the president puts an initiative into NACO, that initiative is picked up, or supposed to be picked up, by every state association in the country and disseminated down to every, to every county association, and so, to every county. And so in some ways, I think, I really think that NACO in some ways has more power than Congress, because if you think of every county in the country working on childhood poverty or working on water issues or whatever that thing is, to have every county in the country doing that is pretty powerful. There are two issues that I would have been talking about the most, and that's one, of course, mental and behavioral health and de-stigmatizing mental health, but the also, the other is economic mobility for all counties in the country. I haven't decided which one would be my number-one issue, but those are two of my platform issues. And so I really do appreciate everyone who's going, everyone who is helping, Mr. Buffington, sending, one of his staff members, both the Mr. Turner staff are going, one of Mr. Sains' staff, both of Ms. Glass's staff. So I really appreciate that. The vote is very much like a political convention. When you walk in, there are, there are state signs, and then everyone walks up and they go like, from the great state of Florida, what the, and then they, and they cast their votes. And if you get 50-plus one on the first ballot, it's over. Otherwise, you go to a second ballot or a third ballot or whatever you go, whatever ballots you go to. I have two opponents. And yeah, so I'm pretty nervous, to be quite honest. And I have been making phone calls for months, and it's so interesting to make phone calls into Texas and then to make phone calls into Washington State. They're very different phone calls when you're doing that. So yeah, I'm pretty nervous. In fact, I'm really quite nervous and a little excited, but mostly nervous. So hopefully, we will all come back from NACO with good news. Ms. Brixman, if you're still there, if I don't get there by tomorrow at four, if I, something happens, you have to go down to the hotel and choose my table. You have to, if I'm not there.
Okay.
Go choose my table. Draw and do a good table.
Okay.
Do a good table. I'm trusting you to get a good, I'm trusting you to get a good table.
I'll do that.
All right. So everyone have a, oh, one, one more personal point of emphasis. During the month of August, by the end of August, Mr. Karan Sains should come back by the September with a new baby, because they are due in August. And so by the time we get back here on the dais in September, we should have a new baby Sains walking around, so yay! A new baby Sains.
Yes, yes.
It's a boy. Yay! No, not a man, a boy, a little boy. So congratulations to Karan and his beautiful wife, Audrey. All right, everyone, enjoy your August break. We are adjourned. [laughter][1791.32]